Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, January 27th, 2022. And we will call this meeting to order, and I will turn this over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Lichens.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storset. Is not present, and Councilmember Woo.
Here.
We have six of seven councilmembers present.
And I texted Councilmember Storset just a moment ago, haven't heard back yet, so maybe he is on the road.
We'll announce him if he should join in. Oh, I see him in attendees, Josh. Thank you, Josh.
Yes, there he is. Oh, he's been upgraded.
Hi, everyone. Yeah.
Hello.
I'm making habits of just changing time zones every time we meet, so I'm back home, though, so it's good to be back.
No problem. Thank you so much. Okay, so we recognize Councilmember Storset is here. Okay, so we will get started. Our discussion items today, our first item is our 2022 Legislative Session Update. And we are pleased to have Josh Weiss and Annika Vaughn with us from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. So, City Administrator Pasecki, is there anything that you had before we turn it over to Josh and Annika?
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. We had a very interesting couple of sessions with our friends at AWC and all the members who came into the general session and then the breakout sessions. I saw several councilmembers who were in the housing session. I think the mayor, you were in there as well.
I was.
So that was very fascinating, and I think we learned a little bit, both things we're happy about and things we're not so happy about.
Yeah.
But we will continue tracking all those housing bills, and we'll see where those things go. Second, what I'd like Josh and Annika to do is maybe just give us a couple, three dot points or thoughts about how things are going with the session, some of the things we are concerned about. And then finally, this is an opportunity for councilmembers to ask questions and to take a look at our legislative agenda and see if there's anything that we want to modify or add or remove, because I know I've heard from a few councilmembers that they have some issues that they think should be a higher priority for the city or even put onto this list that are not here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh and Annika to give us a quick briefing as to how things are going down in Olympia.
And Mr. Pasecki, I should have asked you this beforehand, but since there are so many new councilmembers that we, I know, as Councilmember Rothenberg said, we've seen you a lot lately, but would it be okay if we did just a very quick introduction of who we are and our background?
Sure, so I think that sounds like a great idea. You know councilmembers Woo and Rothenberg and Denson, but you don't know the other four very well. So I think a couple of minutes worth would be really good if you're okay with that, Mayor.
Of course.
Can I just say that Councilmember Denson is having technical difficulties, and she's, there she is.
There she is.
It's gotta be the cap, right?
Fingers crossed for no more Zoom problems today.
Yeah, really. So, Mayor, I'm just gonna look at the screen here and just go in order. What I see now is Councilmember Lichens to give us a quick couple of minutes bio and thoughts on priorities.
Sure, sure. Good to meet you. My name's Brenda Lichens. I'm a first-time councilmember. My background is I'm a nurse practitioner. I work for UW Medicine. I've worked for Seattle Children's and Multi Care and been in the Gig Harbor area for about six years, but been in the South Puget Sound for over 30 years. Actually grew up in Stillicum, so longtime Washingtonian. New to council, I think I'm most interested as far as the legislative priorities and things, obviously, that affect the city. The housing density mandates, I've heard from residents who are concerned, but I've also heard from residents who are concerned that there isn't affordable housing. So, you know, it's that balance and how we negotiate that forward. The other thing are obviously the infrastructure projects, like getting the fish culverts, and some of the things that Congressman Kilmer brought to our meeting on Monday, some availability to maybe get some funding to help with some transportation projects. Particularly, the one I hear the most about is Highway 16 from lots of constituents. And I have a son who's an engineer, and he calls it an epic engineer fail. So, but, so those are my priorities, as well as, you know, things like the bridge tolls, things that are the hot button issues to our residents here in Gig Harbor. So, yeah, nice to meet you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Tony. Hi, I'm Roger Henderson, also newly elected, never held a governmental position in my life, or at least elected position. I am a retired civil engineer. I spent thirty-some-odd years with the US Army Corps of Engineers in Sacramento District. Worked on a variety of projects, environmental engineering, our civil works, dams, levees, things like that. Also have a degree from UC Davis in environmental planning and management. So as you can imagine, there are certain things that are close to my heart. Clearly, climate change, that is something that I want you folks, hopefully with the guidance of the council here, to start advocating more for. Housing is another thing. I agree, Councilmember Lichens mentioned that, too. There's a lot of issues. There's no one thing that can solve it, but it's, I would like to see the city start doing something. You've probably saw some of my comments in the AWC meeting today that, no, okay, it's fine to oppose everything, but I'd like to see some solutions, too, because I'm pretty much, as most of you know, a solution-oriented person. So when I hear, well, let's kick it down the road, that's not a solution, that's just making it worse. The other thing I dig into is, I served on the Parks Commission, absolutely wonderful commission in the city of Gig Harbor. Some outstanding people. We've got a huge, wonderful network of parks here. Another area that I would like to see more emphasis on, supporting any pedestrian cycling-type initiatives. Pedestrians have been short-changed in the US. We're a really car-centric country, and pedestrians are often an afterthought. They're not particularly well-protected. It's always, well, let's make sure the car occupants don't get hurt, but if you're a pedestrian, best of luck. So whatever is coming down the pipe on that, and those are probably the two, three big issues that I'm focused on.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Barber, our absolutely newest councilmember, just a, what, a week and a couple of days?
Actually, I was sworn in almost exactly a week ago. So, yeah, I'm the new kid, so don't ask me any questions, because I'll just make up the answer. I am a forty-plus-year public relations strategic communications professional. So that's kind of my background and how I approach a lot of things. Like Roger, I also was just on the Parks Commission. So Parks Commission kind of has a good feeder route of wonderful people who've gone from the Parks Commission to city council and mayor. So we're a good breeding ground in this city. I was born in Seattle, raised in Portland, and went to college in Walla Walla. And in addition, as part of my PR career, I've done two US Senate campaigns. I'm two and zero. The one that you might be a little familiar with was Lisa Murkowski's writing campaign in 2010. I volunteered to help with that for the eight-week period and helped her with some messaging and that kind of thing. It was an amazing experience. My priorities, I'm not going to add to what everyone else has already said. Housing is a big issue for me, long-range planning. And I'm also really concerned about, I shouldn't say anything that the state does that's one-size-fits-all, but the housing bill is a really good example of one-size-doesn't-fit-all in Washington. It never has. And I don't know that we're going to see that on very many bills. I'm also really interested in the sports complex and in programs for youth. Because I think making sure that our youth have programs that give them education that's both in-school and out-of-school, education-recreation opportunities are really critical to our future.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. So just a little bit personally, I guess, about myself. Graduated from Gig Harbor High School about twenty years ago now. Went back and coached soccer there at the high school for the boys' team for five years. I continue now to coach in, you know, little kids' sports with my kids. Went to the University of Washington, and then went back a second time for my MBA, just finished that up a couple of years ago. And I have worked in the maritime industry my entire career. I currently oversee safety and compliance. So those are real fun, right? Talk about rules. Yeah, so big things for me that are top of mind. Sports complex is like a huge favorite. I mean, I'm just very excited about that. We're in dire need for more sports fields. It's just, it's overcrowded. You know, we've had a lot of growth in the last, especially in the last ten years in housing. So we need to have now more of those offerings, you know, to folks, and it's definitely something that our citizens want. Also on the Highway 16. You know, it seems like, you know, of course, we got some work done years ago, but we need to do more expansion on some of the overpasses, extending the HOV lane. So those are big ones. I know at a city level, we don't necessarily have like a vote on that, but we can have some great influence. So hope for your help on that, of course. And then, you know, on the, I know again, on these, like, say, law enforcement, we want to do our best to, well, I'm not speaking for everyone, but I want to do our best to serve our officers, you know, locally here in Gig Harbor and give them, you know, get some of these bills back in place that allow them to do their jobs and do it effectively. So that one's big on me. Also, again, on the, I think this is reiterated a fourth time from the new councilmembers, but on our local control of, you know, housing developments and affordable housing. You know, I heard the line, that's actually exactly what I was thinking, one, it's not a one solution for everybody, and this definitely wouldn't work well for us, so. Yeah, I'll leave it at that, because I know we've got a lot more. So, thank you.
Great, thank you to all four of our councilmembers. So I will now then again say, take it away, Josh and Annika.
Josh, do you want me to introduce myself really quick, and then you can go?
Yeah, sure, that'd be great.
Hi, everyone. I'm Annika Vaughn. I've been working at Gordon Thomas Honeywell for about three years. And then before that, I was an intern, so this is my fourth session with GTH. I graduated from UW Political Science, and I grew up in Olympia, so I'm a region native. Actually, one of my really close friends is from Gig Harbor, too, so I've been kind of hitting all of your sites. So I've really enjoyed working with the city and feel like I have actually intimate knowledge of places in the city, which is a little different than some of our other clients across the state.
Thanks, Annika. And thank you all for doing that. That was really helpful and nice for us. We appreciate that. So as we're with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, GTH is in Tacoma. Our main office is in Tacoma. As I think you all know, we have a Washington DC office as well, because you work with Dale Lern back there. I am actually in Olympia and spend most of my time here at my office in Olympia, because that's where I live as well. I've been, and we really do have a focus at GTH on, we're the state's biggest government relations firm. We have a focus on local government. But I also have another business partner that has a lot of business in agricultural clients, so we are diversified. We actually also have an international practice as well that does a lot of work with foreign countries that are interested in adopting laws related to use of DNA for public safety types of concerns. You know, we have former Greg Wires, former Chief of Staff Cindy Zender works with us, and former congressman Riker works with us as well. So it's a really great team, and we're really fortunate to be there. I've been with the firm for about, almost four years, but I've been working in Olympia in government relations and government jobs for just over twenty years now. I started on nonpartisan staff for the House Natural Resources Committee. And I've worked for a trade association. I've worked for the county association, actually the counterpart to AWC in different capacities. So I've been doing this for quite a while. I've been in agency legislative liaison as well. So Anna and I work together on ninety-nine percent of my clients. And we have six cities and six counties. We have a consortium, a coalition, I guess I should say, of private timberland owners that are all family-held, multi-generational companies that are probably in your neighborhood, if you've heard of, and in an economic development organization in the North Olympic Peninsula. I should also say that GTH has represented Gig Harbor for, I want to say, about fifteen years. We really have a strong, proud connection with you all. Our president, Tim Shelberg, used to be a resident of Gig Harbor. And we go back as far as his initiation of the firm, so really enjoy working with you all. And I like Annika, too. One of my best friends from college lives in Gig Harbor, and my brother-in-law and sister-in-law live in Gig Harbor, so we like spending time there.
I wanted to add that our closest other client is the city of Port Orchard, so there are some issues that you guys have connections on, congestion issues, obviously, with Highway 16, things like that. And just want to say, my newest discovery in Gig Harbor is Crumble Cookie. I have been going there. I'm super addicted, so thank you for blessing us all with that.
So thank you for allowing us to do that.
Sure.
Really appreciated that, and happy to, you know, now I think, Tony, you wanted us to talk just a couple of minutes about where we are in.
Correct.
And I'm not sure how many of you, I hope this isn't repetitive. I'm not sure how many of you have worked legislative process before. So we are in the second year of the biennium, which is the short legislative session. It's only sixty days long. The long sessions are a hundred and eighty days, and much longer, these short sessions are just a sprint. And the way the legislative process works, they set up a number of deadlines for bills to advance to a certain position. If they don't advance to that position by the time the deadline hits, then they're considered dead. There's always exceptions. They are always breaking their own rules and waiving the rules, but for the most part, that's how it works. And so we are, we are coming up on our first deadline, which is to get bills out of their committee of origin, their policy committee, and that will be next Thursday, the third, and that is a date that we all, in the professional lobbying world, really look forward to, because I may have said this to you before, but at this point right now in session, it's just totally a process of triage, like worst. Up until just a couple of days ago, we were seeing, you know, many, many bills introduced every day, and we're just trying to get our arms around, okay, what's out there, what's the universe look like, and what's going to get winnowed out so that we can know kind of what's a real proposal and what's not. We sometimes, you know, we usually have a pretty good sense based on who the sponsor is and what the topic is, whether or not it's what we call a hero bill, something that they're putting forward to talk to their constituents at home about, or whether it's a serious proposal. But it's not until really this first cutoff that we start to see things really narrow down. And once it narrows down, we can pay a lot more attention and get a lot more substantive on our reactions. It feels very frantic for the first couple of weeks during specials, during a short session. And then all the bills will go into fiscal committees if they have fiscal impact, and they'll be heard there and considered. Same thing, there's a cutoff there, which is just four days after the the first cutoff, and then they go to their, to the floor, and they debate bills on the floor and in the House of origination, and same thing, if they don't get off the floor by a certain date, they're dead. They go over to the other chamber, and we do it all again. And so, you know, a lot of what we're trying to do at this point is identify bills that we think you might be interested in, get some initial feedback on what the impact might be, and then really identify, do we need to testify at that very first hearing? Do we need to sign in on the official record of the committee at that very first hearing? Because a lot of times legislators will kind of hold it against you if you miss a bill the very first time around. They want it, they want you to know that you've been engaged in the process and have been trying to fix things rather than just kill them. So, again, most bills, there's at least two opportunities to be on the record in the committee. A good amount of what we do for you is reactive. It's always, you know, it's always surprising the number of issues that come up that we're like, oh, we didn't anticipate this at all. We have to scramble and figure out what we're going to do. But we also, one of the things that we really pride ourselves on at our firm is working with you during the non-session times to help you identify what are the priorities, and then let's make sure we have our story together so that we know what our talking points are. Councilmember Barber, sounds like we might be wanting to work with you on our messaging. That would be wonderful. We get legislators out and do tours if it's appropriate. We really try to be ahead of the game so that we're not going into session just starting out. And so, and then part of what we also really will focus on, and you have good relationships with all of your legislative delegation, and it's relatively easy, considering there's only one legislative delegation for you, but a lot of what we do is just making sure that the legislators know, remember, Gig Harbor has this position on this bill. When it comes to the floor, our legislators aren't in all the committees on all the bills that we care about, right? So the first time they will have heard about something is when it comes up to the floor, and so making sure they have the background and know what's going on. I should also emphasize, we really truly are bipartisan. Neither of us got into this work. None of our firm members got into this work because of, except for, obviously, Congressman Riker. You know, some of those folks, and Dale, you know, worked for some of the members of Congress, but I started on nonpartisan staff. I'm not in this as a political operative at all. We work really closely with members of both parties. So we also work with you to, on your legislative agenda, and we break this up into, and I'm not sure if all the new councilmembers have seen this even necessarily, but we have two documents that we put together for you.
And Josh, we put those into the package.
Okay, cool. And I realize I completely headed off down the track. This is not two minutes about how session's going. Do you want me to pause and take a breath and answer some questions?
Let's jump into how the session is going, then we can talk about the legislative agenda as we have it. And we can kind of walk through that real quick and get the council's feel for, is this still how we want to prioritize things, or are there some little tweaks that we need to make, or major changes?
Sounds good, and feel free to interrupt me anytime, please. It's going, it's been fast and furious. Like last session, there's two dynamics that are really shaping it, the virtual, the fact that we are doing everything virtually, and the fact that the Democrats have such massive majorities in both the House, the Senate, and with the governor's mansion. The Republican caucus has really been sidelined for the last two years in both the Senate and the House. And I think a combination of this big majority, the fact that we are virtual has really, you don't see the same level of collaboration and problem-solving that you were used to seeing, I would say, at the Washington State Legislature. So, you know, we're still seeing the major issues for the legislature have been pushing out the implementation date of long-term care tax that they put into place last session. They've been spending a lot of time on the police reform fixes from last session, and you know, those really have been the major, kind of the two major big pieces.
And so council knows, Chief Bucy has been very much part of the process of getting these cities positioned with regard to the police reform packages or bills. He's testified, I think, in both the House and the Senate on that. And he's very much showing a lot of leadership from the whole state on that. So he's not here today. He's down in the Phoenix area. He said he needed some sunshine.
Good for him. So.
I see Councilmember Denson has a question.
Sorry, because you mentioned the police bills, is there any, anything you can tell us about progress? I know things are early yet, but any projections?
Yeah, I think there will be a couple of measures adopted. It's looking pretty consistent with, I think, what we were hearing before session, which was, the majority was not going to roll back what they did last year, but they clearly got the message that there were some problems. There will be a bill that is moving forward still that clarifies that police can use less lethal alternatives, like bean bags. There also is a bill that is moving forward that clarifies that wind force can be used when police are responding for, like, mental health crises or individuals that are in a mental health crisis. Those, I think, are both pretty well-agreed, too, and I think are going to be enacted.
And those are actually on the floor calendar now, so we'll probably see them be up in the House for debate pretty soon.
Thanks, Annika. The one that is in a little bit more trouble is the one that just has to do with whether or not what the definition of force is and what the standard is for when force can be used. And there's actually a new, the sponsor that started over with a brand-new bill, and that's House Bill 2037, that's trying to define use of force and line it up with what the Criminal Justice Training Commission trains on the use of force. And I think this one, we've heard law enforcement say, is very helpful. I'm not going to say the most important one, but it is certainly a very significant piece of legislation, but it's not clear that the Democratic Caucus is going to let that through. I think it's very controversial within their caucus. So, yeah, those are, those are pretty much the big, the three big ones at this point.
Did one of those include the discussion of probable cause and reasonable suspicion? Did you cover that?
Yeah, well, I didn't cover it, but that is in 2037, that last one that I mentioned.
And that's the one that also deals with the situation where an officer shows up on the scene, it's rather chaotic. There's a bunch of people there, and he says, everyone, you're not under arrest, but you're not free to leave either until I start figuring out who's who and what's what. And that bill, is that part of 2037, or is that in a different bill? What I heard today at AWC was that particular concept in whatever bill it's in is moving forward.
I thought it was 2037, but it could be 1735. I apologize for.
Yeah, I know. After a while, all the numbers just kind of flow together.
Yeah.
I thought it was maybe that 1735 potentially that they mentioned this morning.
Whichever bill it's in, that, that, that issue is being moved forward.
Yep.
At least through the process, whether or not it comes out of the House of Origin or not, we'll just have to wait and see. Right. And then the other issue was pursuits, and I am not hearing as much about pursuits as I have heard about some of the other bills. So is there any bill moving that will change the pursuit language that was adopted last session?
Yes, there is a bill out, in fact, there's two bills out there, and I would need to check here to see what their status is.
And while you're doing that, we got a request for the chief to testify earlier this week on a bill having to do with the use of the video that is taken at the bridge as people are crossing it and paying tolls. The current language in law says that we don't have access to that. The bill that has been proposed, and I don't know if it's with probable cause or reasonable suspension, would give the police the ability to look at that video and to look at it right away in the event of certain type alleged crimes. So I know there's a hearing held on that earlier this week, and the chief did testify. It's been an issue that's been very near and dear to his heart.
That actually is an item that we had on your legislative agenda, I want to say, two or three years ago.
Yep.
So the vehicular pursuits bill, that's House Bill 1788, it is included in your report. That bill was heard, I believe, last week or the week before, but it's scheduled to be exact out of committee next week.
Okay.
And they scheduled it twice, so if they don't get it to it the first time, they will definitely do it the second time.
And there's a Senate version of that bill, too, that's also scheduled for exact, and that's 5919.
Okay.
So.
So the big bill, bills, I should say that we are tracking, and have been the major source of discussion are the ones regarding land use, single-family zoning. land use, single-family zoning, preemption, 1782, and I can't remember the Senate bills, 56 something.
5670.
We heard a lot of conversation about that today at AWC. For me, the most interesting comment that I heard was from the governor himself. Were all of you watching that speech?
Yes.
Where he said, I am going to push this. This is, you all know this is the right thing to do, and you can just blame me for that. I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll take all the blame, just throw it all at me.
Yeah, that was interesting, for sure.
Yeah.
He says, I'll be the bad guy so that the city officials that want this to happen can make it happen.
Right. And so you just, you can just shrug your shoulders and say it's, it's the big old mean governor's fault.
What I thought was really interesting was later in the, in the breakout session, when there were more specific conversations, the guy from Seattle who was so gung ho at the very beginning of the hour, he started to kind of say, wait a minute, I can understand where you guys are coming from. I don't really know that he was backpedaling as much as he seemed to realize that there were some really good points that people were making, and maybe I should listen to you and make some adjustments.
It was like, he was suddenly realizing that one size does not fit all.
Oh, yeah.
So from your perspective, Josh, Annika, how are those bills moving and are there going to be? Are there going to be some amendments offered that would be acceptable from what you're hearing? And I mean, not just to us, but to some of the other legislators out there.
So the Senate version passed out a committee this morning. There was an amendment that the sponsor had worked on with the governor's office. It did not reflect changes from cities. There was only one no vote in opposition to it coming out of committee. So it is going to, we think it's going straight to the floor. We don't think it goes to Ways and Means, at least I've seen yet.
Really?
Yeah, because there's no expenditures in it.
Well, doesn't, the Senate has a rules committee, though, don't they?
They have a rules committee, but the rules committee is essentially the gatekeeper for getting on the floor. You're right, it could die in the rules committee, but and there's not an opportunity to testify in rules.
And from what I'm seeing and hearing, the the Democrats and the more liberal members look at this as a way of creating more affordable housing, dealing with homelessness, allowing development and homes to be built close to transit in a way that is not as expensive as it currently is under current rules. And the Republicans and the folks moving, who would move to the right are looking at it as an opportunity to help their home builder.
Yep, you hit that nail on the head. That's the dynamic. And the only people that are complaining at all at this point are cities and residents that have heard about it.
Right. I see we have a couple of questions here, Your Honor.
Yes, Councilmember Look.
Thank you. What I heard, what I heard and what I thought was interesting is some cities that have already been doing this. And they have said it is, it does not create affordable housing.
Correct. I mean, the bottom line is that the price of a home that's built is going to be determined by the market.
That's right.
Yeah.
So you, e- even if you build a cheap one, because rules allow you to do so, it's what's being sold in the neighborhood that is going to determine the price. And a lot of people are arguing that by, by lowering a lot of these requirements for the builders, all you're doing is padding their bottom line.
Yep.
Oh yes, Councilmember Barber.
Josh, you mentioned that the bill is, was amended before it was voted out of the committee. What was the amendment that was put on it?
I actually can't synthesize it in a short period of time. It was, it was a pretty comprehensive substitute. It was a substitute bill for the underlying language. So it was pretty fairly comprehensive, but not in a way that's particularly helpful for cities.
Okay.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I guess we can not argue, but discuss the reasoning that some of these cities that have already done this kind of work to still have high, high-cost housing. I mean, there's a whole lot of issues that are surrounding it, and even if you build some lower costs houses in your city, if the demand is there, if you've still got so many same, single-family residents that there's such a demand, the price is always going to be high. I guess the question that I wanted to get to, though, was the issue of local control. Is, are there any bills or anybody saying, instead of, you know, being as prescriptive as they are, to say, maybe cities set a goal, I don't know, 5% of your vacant lots can do this? And then let the city figure out how that gets done, either with with zoning or with architectural standards that are strict for everybody, not just them. Versus saying, well, it's got to be, you know, a minimum density. I, I, I've said it and I'll say it again, that I think in some cases, local control has gotten us to where we are, where some cities have said, we don't want anything new here, we just want single-family housing. And that's, we are sitting in that kind of a dilemma right now. So I understand that the top-down movement of this is to say, okay, we've had lots of local control, we're not doing well, there's some way we can at least kind of poke people along to do something. Some cities have gotten out in, in front of this. I think if they had some time, they might see some affordable housing being built, but right now there's such a high demand that my suspicion is whatever you build is going to get expensive very quickly, and that's going to take time to get past that.
Yeah, I would say generally, and this is a little bit in response to Tony's question too, there has been a huge reticence at taking any suggestions from local governments. I, I know my partner Brianna, business partner Brianna, represents City Tacoma. They've met with the governor's office twice and made specific red line requests in the bill to make it better and make it more workable. And that hasn't been reflected in any of the drafts going forward. So there is very little desire at this point to try and fix the bills.
So even from legislators who used to be members of city councils?
Yeah.
Wow. How quickly they forget.
Yeah.
So Mayor, we're at 2:40. We can spill over past 1:00, 3 o'clock a bit. But I would suggest that we spend just a couple of minutes going through the legislative agenda that was adopted in November by the council. I should say, previous council, and just touch on it. See what the current council thinks, if there's any reordering we need to do or anything else we need to add, if that's all right?
Yep, I think that's great.
So I'm assuming you all have this document. Let's just walk through it. So we have identified a, these are, they don't have the numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 on it, but for the most part, they are in order priority. So the first thing is state route 16 congestion relief, and we identify three projects that we would like to see happen, we would like to get funding for. I'm just gonna put it out there, counsel, do you believe this is still a top priority based upon your thoughts?
I see hands raising, thumbs up. Okay, looks like yes.
Okay. And then our sports complex, the capital budget request, oh, I see Councilmember Henderson, I don't know, did you have any other comment? Okay, the sports complex, is it still top priority?
Yes, Josh, you, did you have something you wanted to ask?
Um, yes, but now it's, why don't you answer the question a little back?
Okay, so the, so I'm seeing yeses for the sports complex, still a priority. Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Josh.
I just wanted to add on the transportation request. We've been asking for this for four years now. And, and we essentially are in the position where we are waiting for the state to adopt a transportation revenue package so that they can fund new projects. We have been in both House and Senate package proposals. Your delegation has been on board with these requests from the start. It's been frustrating because this hasn't changed, and we've been waiting for a while, but and we don't expect, they're talking about a mini package this year that's primarily going to be funded with carbon money and transfers from, I, I don't think we'll see this in there, but you never know. So just a little.
We heard at AWC today that, don't expect any kind of transportation package at all. Particularly one that has any new revenues in it.
Right.
That there's going to be a competition for some of the additional, call it excess revenue that has been projected by the is it OMB? I can't remember who, who does all that work, the Office of Financial Management. So there might be some money that goes towards some projects. But if you want to look at a, a big transportation package, it's gonna, that'll be an issue in January of next year.
Right.
Af- after the election.
Right.
They don't like going on the record or have that on the record that they voted for tax increases when it's an election. Funny.
We have heard from some House members that they are interested in possibly plus-ing up TID funds, so that might be an opportunity for you guys to get money that way, but I don't think for not for individual projects, just kind of the program.
And the governor mentioned today that if someone asked him about sweeping up some of those infrastructure accounts that have occurred over the last five to 10 years, particularly Public Works Trust Fund. And he indicated that the, the day of sweeping is done, that they're going to look at how they can restore some of the funds to that, that fund. And so we shall see.
Yes, Councilmember Barber.
I'm assuming that, again, I'm the new kid, but I'm assuming that this isn't necessarily Josh and Annika, but maybe for Dale, but also, is there opportunity to receive funding for this Highway 16 from the infrastructure bill? It seems like that might be the way to move this off of center.
Actually, I'd like Jeff to comment on that because the projects that we have here in our, our, our first item here, are those projects that we would do or these projects were asked and washed out to do, or is it kind of a combination?
The projects that the city would fund and design in conjunction with WashDOT. We do need to obtain WashDOT approval before proceeding. But they would be a city capital project.
Okay. So the answer, Councilmember Barber, is, is maybe.
Yeah.
When it comes to the federal line. And, and the feds are, they're, they're this mysterious black box, particularly the Senate this year. And something's gonna pop out here in a month or two, probably about, about mid-February, I think, is what Dale told me. And when it comes to the House, they've pretty much decided what all the members are going to be proposing for earmarks, and we didn't get anything. However, there is opportunities. You saw that list of grants that I had sent that Dale Lern had forwarded to us. And Josh, I don't know, I don't know if you saw that email as well. But there's various pots of money that there are, the the White House is trying to figure out, how do we, how do we dole this out and what are the rules going to be? So it's all fluid.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I guess Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Jeff, I think, the three, and I, I know we haven't gotten through our list, I'm sorry, and that was the question I had about the first one. The three projects there, everybody's nodding about them. I, do we have a quick sketch of what they're actually proposing? Maybe this isn't the time to look at it, but at some point, can we all see what those kind of look like, maybe just a drawing on a piece of paper? I understand as an engineer what they're gonna do, but I'd sure like to see what the, what the vision is for that.
Yes, there had been a sketch, a really high-level overview of just, I think, a dots on a map. We do have more than that, not a whole lot more, but we can provide you that later, maybe through a study session.
Yeah. And, and Jeff, you need to go here for, for a few minutes, so.
Yes, I do.
Go. Jeff has a, a online school function he needs to do with his kindergarten, so.
Very high-level importance.
Very high-level importance, absolutely.
Go ahead and continue on, yeah.
The, the next items that we have in our legislative agenda have to do with the law enforcement legislation adjustments. And we just gave you a summary where those things are going. So I'm assuming council still wants to keep those as a priority based upon everything. I've been hearing and seeing from all of you. Thank you.
Great.
The, let's see, fourth item is fund local culverts. And we're gonna actually have a discussion about culverts, one in particular, after we're done with this item. And we heard from Congressman Kilmer about some of the opportunities that are going to be coming from the federal government. So I, I, I think that's still a priority for this council. Again, based upon, I've heard, heard and talked with all of you about.
Yes, thumbs, hands?
Yes. Yep, so, well, with
Majority.
With the Mr., with Councilmember Rodenberg. It is not a priority for him.
Okay.
We'll have more of a conversation of that in a little bit. And then finally, we hit an item on local control. And it's broader than just housing densities, even though that is called out. The way this is written, it just talks about local decisions are best made by elected locals, fit local officials. So I think from a broad standpoint, that should continue to be a priority for the city, but we need to check in with you when we have particular items that are floating around the legislature to make sure that you are comfortable with us maintaining that as the state's position.
Oh yes, Councilmember Look.
Thank you. There's another item that has to do with local control. It's House Bill 1770. And basically, House Bill 1770 says that the state, while the state may have requirements for certain energy requirements for buildings, if cities want to have stricter requirements for energy, creating better environmental energy effective buildings, they may do so. So I would really like to see if the council is interested in supporting this form of local control as well. It's just an option, it's not a mandate. And it basically says if cities want to do this, they have the option to do this, to create stronger regulations for their buildings to be more energy effective. As we know, 29% of, of, of the problem lies with buildings, and so it would be helpful to do what we can to make our buildings more energy effective. Thank you.
You. Councilmember Henderson.
Well, I'd like to propose a couple of ads then to this, not taking anything away. You heard me mention earlier on about climate change. I would like the, I would like any of those bills brought up that are dealing with climate change mitigation, fighting climate change, whatever. I noticed that's not even on our list yet. Clearly, anything the state is going to do to sweeten the pot for electrification of vehicles, kind of like a lot of other states have done, putting out their own tax rebates, and the feds have also done that as well. I think I've heard something like that at the state level too. $7,500, I think, at the state level for purchase of electric vehicles, BEVs.
So if you go to the second document that we have attached here, it's kind of a continuation of the first document. It says the Gig Harbor, City of Gig Harbor supports or opposes. And then we have a list of items, and it's this document right here. We could craft some language based upon what Councilmember Henderson is saying that we could go into that list. Or if you think it needs to be front and center, then we could add it as an item in the first list of things.
I'll be happy to have it anywhere right now.
Tony, can you explain the, the difference between the two lists? Sorry, I didn't raise my hand, but.
The, the first list is the, the one that's a little bit more specific or issues that are very high on the priority list for the city to be weighing in on. The other set of items is just a list of topics where if in general something comes up that we think that we need to weigh in on, we will. Or if we're ever asked a question by one of our legislators, we can say, yes, the city would support that.
Okay, the other way that I've sorry, may I? The other way that I've explained it too is the legislative agenda, the first The other way that I've explained it to is the legislative agenda, the first document. Are really the issues where we are saying we will take proactive action. Uh, we will initiate action. Um, the second list is more, um, and and that is a document that we share with our legislators. Um, the second document is one that's more of a conversation amongst us. And it helps give direction to Annika and me. When we're do- when we're screening for bills, we know what to look for, um, to highlight for you. Um, and and it is a little bit more of a reactive document. Um, and I can explain if it's relevant and you want to know at some point how we come up with the bill list that is attached to your weekly reports, which has to do with that too.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, we've the priority list that we have uh on this document that Tony showed us. Uh, as far as our priorities, uh, we were told by our by both Josh and Annika that. It's very important to keep those things consistent year after year and not be adding new things to it. Or else our legislators think we're jumping all over the place. As far as putting something on the oppose or support. Uh, that's all right, but it's not our position to be writing writing bills. We will wait for a bill to show up. And either support it or oppose it, uh, we can suggest to our legislators that it's important to us, but. Uh, I don't think we need to change our priorities uh over something that is. Not necessarily uh something that's gonna happen in the short term.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Councilmember Wood.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, so I I don't care where it comes from, but it's uh which list it appears on, but it's really nice to be able to speak. To these state legislature and let them know that this is, these are items that are important to the city. And and to be able to speak as a council person, so however this happens, um, doesn't need to be a priority, can be in the other list. As long as the city thinks that this is important and 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 we we can speak to that. That's my concern there.
Thank you, Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just had a question, just kind of, you know, this is a study session, so we can, we can, we can take a step back to. Cause I'm I'm just curious, how many priorities have we historically had in the past and what has worked for us? So currently, on this list, we have. Five, so we, you know, Roger's brought up potentially an additional one. Um. Tony or whoever would like to field that question.
To that question.
Josh, okay, just kind of trying to figure out what's healthy for us to take on. And not take on too much that we slip on 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 anyone, you know, looking, not, this is a list, I don't know that this is. In like in priority of of what we think is the most important, if that's been ranked, but. Uh, I think that's important to pay attention to, so we actually accomplish what we're what we're trying to target.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head. Um, we really do like to keep our agenda narrow. Um, Councilmember Rodenberg's right for for particularly like our budget requests. Um, we like to keep them consistent from year to year for if we're not successful the first year on them. Um, I typically like to have. You know, one transportation request, one capital budget request. And if there's an operating budget request, then one of those, and then, you know. If you're going to ask for an initiate bill or a policy with peace, then, you know, maybe one of those. If we're being a little bit more reactive like on law enforcement culverts this year, then a couple of those, but pretty much what you can fit on one page and and. No more than one capital, one transportation.
And what are, I'm just, this is also just like a general question. If I was talking with any of you one on one, I would, I would, I would ask this or ask someone else that that's had experience, but. Um, on these two, do we, when this list is created, I would imagine that we we weigh in a bit on what can we really influence and make a an impact on. Versus what's really out of our control. And that's, I mean, just something I think that we all need to think about, because this is something that's been passed on from last November. Some things to consider. I like the consistency. I think that is very important. Um, but yeah, I think it's. Anyways, those are just my my thoughts, but open to hear feedback on that, that same, you know, it's the same topic in case we're shifting gears at all.
Thank you. Councilmember Liggins.
Hi, thanks, Mayor. Um, so just to clarify, and first of all, thank you Seth and Mary for asking those questions. Because those were questions I had as well, and so, you know, um, letting us people who are new to the process ask that. And kind of get our hands around this is super helpful. Your your summaries you send us each week are so great. So good, so helpful, really took it down to a level that I could understand pretty easily. But just really quickly, so if we were to add something to the City of Gig Harbor's support supposes, just the general list. What Lee was talking about, instead of, you know, keeping our priorities narrow, but putting it on that list. If it appears on that list, can you testify as a council member or should you, if we say we support it? Um, or do you still just testify as an individual, just to clarify?
So here's what I would say, um, and this depends maybe a little bit on what the city wants to do.
Sure.
But um, I feel like anytime you are testifying. One, anytime you're testifying, if you could let us know, that would be awesome. Um, two, and then that's just so we're not surprised. And if you're testifying and you want to testify as a council member on behalf of the city, then yeah, it needs. In my opinion, it needs to be something that the the council has a has approved.
Okay.
Um, I I do think I see other council members, um. You know, who will go to Olympia and say, I'm Joshua, so I'm a resident of Olympia, and I'm here. In this position, not saying they're there on behalf of the city, they're not even saying they're there in their official capacity. Everybody knows, or a lot of people know that they are, but um you're making that distinction.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Super helpful. I guess Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. Um, I guess, since I'm new on this, I'm still trying to figure out these. The first document versus the second document. Let's just say, for instance, that we decide climate changes. Too much for this first document and we stick it on the second one. What does that mean for you and Anika, that if something comes up, you don't mention it because it's really not on our priority list? Or is it something, I mean, how does this get it out there? I I I don't want to put it somewhere where it's like, okay, out of sight, out of mind. Let's just keep on these things here, because, I mean, quite frankly, if I were to look at some of these things, here, they're very specific on the first document. And yet some are very general, and so. Then we're saying, well, is this first document just on the legislative actions that are going on right now? Because like, for instance, the highway sixteen stuff, great stuff, I agree, but that's pretty darn specific down to three projects. And yet, when I look at the last one, local control, that's a broad topic. I mean, that could be anything. Goodness, that could be housing, that could be environmental regulations, that could be police officer and whatever. So I I guess I'm confused on. How you folks who are supposed to be representing the City of Gig Harbor in the legislature. Take these and interpret it, okay, this is what the city wants.
That's a great question. So, um. Let, I think this will answer, if I talk about how we approach the schedule each week, so. There's two things. At the beginning of session in particular, every night, there will be a list of bills that that have been each introduced each day. And in the evening, we go through those and come through them. And we identify bills that are generally, we're looking for two things. Specific topics that are on your support opposed list or bills that are like general city issues, right? And we know A W C is covering those issues too, but we like to make sure that you're aware of them, and a lot of times what what I will do. Um, then, once a week, the schedule comes out for hearings, the next week, I'll go through that schedule. And I'll say, okay, these bills are actually moving forward now. They're gonna get a hearing, and so I will send an email. To Tony. Um, and the mayor is what we've been doing lately, and I'll say. Hey, you better take, can you take a look at these four bills that have to do with land use planning? I don't know quite what they do. I know generally what they do, but can you tell me if they're a concern or not? Then we take that feedback. And um, we send it to you in your weekly summary. Or your weekly report, which comes out on Sunday, right? In the beginning of that, at this, at the end of that document, there's a list of upcoming events, so those are things that are getting heard. And we will, in that list. Show you the ones that we've gotten direction on and whether or not we are taking a position or not. There's also then after that a list of bill summaries. And we break that up into what, this is just a categorization thing. We break it up into a category called lobbying and one called monitoring. And then in lobbying, those are the bills basically that you've given us some direction. It's not necessarily that we're out like hitting the pavement hard on it, but you've taken a position on it. And. And then in the monitoring is like, we flagged this, we're watching it, we're keeping track of it, but we haven't taken a position. And then you can see what that position has been. And sometimes, you know, it's a, we signed the city and on the record officially is opposed, sometimes it's. You know, the mayor showed up online and not showed up, we asked the mayor to show up and testify. On behalf of the city, and we took a position or the or the chief did, or whatever the case might be. Um, and so it's really. There is a great opportunity, I guess I would say, for the city to be giving us guidance on legislation that is beyond necessarily the support opposed list. We just need to be consistently having a conversation, and usually this is between. Tony and and the mayor and us about, you know, how much energy are you putting into the legislative process? You really do only have limited political capital, like, are you just burning through your political capital, because because when you show up at a hearing, people are like, oh, gosh, there they are again. Um, and and are you being impactful? So it's a little bit of a balancing act as well. Did that answer the question?
Well, I guess sorta, I I I still want to know, I mean, when I see two lists. My mind goes to, okay, which list is more important? I mean, is there a more important list? Um, which one do you ignore and say, well, I'm not gonna worry about this, because these are the priorities, and this doesn't fall on that top list, or vice versa? Hey, fell in the bottom list, that's more important. I mean. I guess it seems like if the city were to come, I mean, if the city, and again, because I'm new, haven't done this. I need to, I gotta understand what, why two lists, why not one big list that says, here's our priorities, period, any sense? Not, well, here's a list of opposed, support, but here's some others that are kind of the same, but they're slightly different. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the rules of engagement and. Because it does mean, I mean, if it turns out that it means something where something is placed, then I need to know that, and everybody else here needs to know that, because. We may all have our own uh legislative agendas that we'd like to see the city move towards, and I. Last thing I want to do is agree, okay, put it on this list, and for you two guys, that means, okay, well, that's it's gone. Or, you know, it's the most important thing, ball.
So let me, let me take a little stab at that. When I look at the, I'm just gonna call it list one and list two. When I look at list one, um, there is both very specific. And very general items on there. What that tells me, though, is the specific items we've given a lot of thought to, they're floating around out there. Um, and we are very sure of how we feel about those. Particularly with the last two items that we have on here, the fund local culverts and local control. We have a lot of culverts in the city, and council has said, uh, where we can uh get funding to replace those. We would like uh to support that. Local control, I guarantee you, is an item that is on just about every single city council uh priority list.
Yeah.
And basically what it tells me is whenever the legislature decides that they know better than you. That uh that's something that we need to be very careful about and take a good hard look at, because it's, it goes way beyond zoning. There are so many other places that the legislature can jump in and say, nope, cities, this is how you have to do things. Nope, cities, you can't do that. Uh, and a lot of those things, uh, we just need to be aware that they are coming. And that we want to make sure that we're at least paying attention to. And if it's something that we really want to weigh in on, then we jump in. The other list, list number two. Gives me the mayor and our lobbyists a general direction as to, hey, if something big pops up in the way of these items. Uh, we really want to know what these are all about, and we, we're gonna research a little bit more, but there's also a lot of little things. That are about floating around and tidbits that are in a bill here or a bill there, that kind of touch on these things. And we just need to be able to have a general uh thought as to how the council feels about these things. And if they start to, you know, as they say, get a life of their own, get the girl legs and start running, and we're unsure. Then between Josh, Annika, the mayor and me, we will reach out to council and say, hey, here is something that we didn't expect. And it is on our list number two, we're really not a hundred percent sure how council feels about this. So one thing that I have done in the past is when something like that pops up, I'll send a um. Email to council, just saying this is an issue that is happening. Don't hit reply all. But give me your thoughts or give me a call, and if we need to uh go to council in whatever way. To get a formal position on this thing, let's do that. So, quite frankly, Roger, probably the best way for me to describe it is it's a little bit of a black box. And weird, weird things happen down in all legislatures. Uh, one of the things that just drives me crazy is they are not subject to Open Public Meetings Act. They are not subject to the uh Public Records Act. Uh, so they do a lot of stuff behind closed doors, and sometimes it pops out and you gotta react right away. And we sometimes don't even know it's happening.
Thank you for that explanation, Tony, that's.
Condoluted as it was.
Yeah, as Andrew Farland says, clear as mud, right? Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, it seemed like we're doing an awfully lot of discussion about the format, but not so much about the issues. Maybe if there's something we could do offline to explain it, uh, the titles of the list might be better, and let's stick to the issues.
Yep.
I just wanted to say to, you know, Councilmember Henderson, we'll have a lot of time over the interim to work on this with you guys. We'll go through the same process of. Deciding what we want to be on our list that we did last year, um, and we can work, you know, individually too, if there's um more questions. It's just obviously really hard right now during the middle of session, I know. Yeah, for sure. Well, no, I was just trying to say, like, it's a lot of information, and it's not clear how we're sorting through this mentally, so. Um, yeah, we'll have further opportunities to engage on this.
Okay, yeah, I mean, as long as we can talk about that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
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 And if it's the direction of the council, we can write. A statement that would go on the list number two with regard to uh climate change, something about the city generally supports. Um, legislation that helps deal with climate change, be it through electrification of vehicles. Uh, reducing carbon footprints, you know, something in general terms. Uh, and then we can add that to that list. So if if I have head nods from council, at least take a shot at that between. Josh, Annika, the mayor and myself, I think we can pull something together.
You'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Not to beat this horse to dead, the simplest way to think about it is the legislative agenda is what we're gonna be handing to legislators.
Yeah, that that list number one has to be pretty short because their attention spans are short. So that's, that's why there's only five items on that list.
You know how many people they hear from every day? Hundreds.
It's not that they don't want to hear our big giant list. I'm sure they do, they just don't have the time, and they have to focus on. The things that are the top, top priorities, and so if those top, top priorities of ours need to change, then we, then we can do that. Just probably not during this very short sixty day session, maybe like Annika said, in the interim. We can, we can work harder on getting that list more perfected with the new council's wishes for the next long legislative session.
Right.
And and we can work on on those things. Yes.
Didn't I just hear Mr. Pricecky say that there could be some wording that would go in the second list?
That has to be climate change. The second list, yes. I would just suggest maybe we don't change our first list right now in the middle of session. But the second list, yes, we can add that language if if, and I didn't see many, I saw a couple thumbs up. Council, can you just raise your hands if you're supportive of adding that language to the second list? One, two, three, four, five, good, okay, great, perfect. So we'll, Tony, maybe you and Roger can sort of work on that offline and and then pass it off to council to for approval. Not, not formal, but you know, does that work?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And if it requires a more formal adoption by council, we'll put it on the February fourteenth agenda for council.
Perfect. So, Tony, do you think in the interest of our, our guests for our three o'clock, our show, can we wrap up this agenda item?
I'm, I, I think we pretty much have wrapped it up. I thought it was a good discussion.
Yeah.
I know we've delved down a little bit into some of the muddy waters of legislators and legislation ac- activity, but I think it was a good discussion. So thank you.
Yeah, very good. And very good for our new council people. Thank you for all your questions. This, it's really good to, to hear, hear those. And thank you to Josh and Annika as always for being here and providing us such great information and for your weekly reports.
I love that weekly report, guys. That is fantastic.
And I wanted to say, please feel free to respond to the report with questions to Josh and me. We will be available. So if you have anything in there that you are confused about, or even on the bill list, as Josh said, we're tracking, you know, bills that we might not be summarizing in depth, please feel free to reach out.
Is that a solicitation for cookies?
Feel free to send me crumble cookie. I will send you my address. I'm happy to share.
My daughter works there. I might be able to arrange that.
You want us to deal directly with you or do you wanna, you prefer us to go through Tony and uh, Mayor Markley if we have a question on something?
My question. I don't feel that's necessary, Tony. Do you?
Yeah, you know, if you, if you have a question, uh, just copy the mayor and me on that when you ask it. And if it's, if it's important enough, then between the mayor or I, we will send that out to the whole council.
Okay. Good.
Great.
Cool.
Thanks.
Thanks again.
Thank you, everybody. Very nice. Take care.
Thank you. Take good care. Okay, so our second item on the agenda is the North Creek, Donkey Creek Culvert Removal and Replacement Project. And welcome to all of our guests.
Yes.
Seeing them coming into the, to the meeting room here. Let's see, we have Jennifer Keating. And we have, I believe that's you, Lindsay. Is that you with Harbor Wild Watch?
This is Rachel.
Um, Angela Dillon. I'll see who else do we have? Josh, that has come into, I wanna recognize everybody that's here.
We have Gwen Lentez. Department of Fish and Wildlife. And Darren Masters with Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
Uh, Tom Lovravich. Uh, commercial fishing operator, um, and Greg Lovravich is in the attendees side, as is maybe Gwen, you can, uh, verify, there's an Eboard WA FWP. Is that, uh, Matt Curtis?
We'll bring that one over.
Okay.
Josh.
Great. And then, um, yeah, so we also have Trent Ward, City Engineer. Uh, and now Greg Lovravich, oh yes, Matt Curtis with Department of Fish and Wildlife showing up as Eboard WA FWP.
Great. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us this afternoon.
Appreciate it.
And Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. And thank you for all of our guests. As you, as we quickly went through, we have representatives here from many different agencies and organizations. Thank you all for joining us. This is a, a big topic. Um, and, uh, probably the first time we'll be talking about this, but definitely not the last. Uh, we have, as we noted, representatives from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, the Pual tribe. Uh, we may have a representative from Wild Fish Conservancy. We requested, uh, Aaron Jorgensen uh, attend. I'm not sure of his schedule. Uh, and then we have, uh, some local commercial fishing operators, Tom Lovravich, Greg Lovravich, uh, Harbor Wild Watch, Rachel, thank you. Uh, and then, uh, city staff, Trent Ward and myself working on the capital project. So that's, that's the group. Um, just for the quick format of this meeting, uh, I'm not gonna give a formal PowerPoint presentation since this is such a large group. Uh, and there's gonna probably be a lot of conversation going back and forth. I'm going to just keep it for the most part in a large group setting like this. And then I'll take the screen away every once in a while and just share some pictures, images uh, to, to, uh, show you where, what we're talking about. So, uh, that's the general concept. So no PowerPoints. Um, any questions at this point before I jump into this? Okay. All right. So first of all, the purpose, why are we here? Um, Department of Fish and Wildlife has reviewed and rated culverts across the state, uh, to uh, to determine whether or not they're passable for fish. Uh, some culverts are passable, some culverts are partially partial blockages and some culverts are full blockages. Um, in a moment, we're gonna allow, uh, Matt and, and DFW to get into more of what that means. Um, but that's just the general, uh, concept of why we're here. We have culverts in our city that are either full barriers or partial barriers. Uh, the project we're talking about here, the North Creek slash Donkey Creek Culvert is considered by DFW a partial barrier. And I'll show you their report in just a, just a minute. The, the report itself, actually I'll show that now, is, uh, shows that there's thirty-three percent passability. So these, uh, reports, and I'll make this a little bigger here. This is a snippet of the report that DFW has prepared for the, uh, Donkey Creek Culvert at Harborview Drive. So some very basic information talks about possible species, uh, location, site comments. And then more of the details of what it looks like, some of the details of the culvert itself, material, shape, uh, assessment results. And there, this is, they say i- in this assessment results that it is a barrier. And there's about thirty-three percent passability. So that's what we're, wh- what got us to start looking at this, uh, to begin with. And then the purpose of today's meeting is to have a broad discussion amongst all of these agencies and organizations who will be in, who are involved already with managing this culvert or who have invested interest in this culvert. And specifically likely the replacement of this culvert with something that it makes the culvert fully passable by fish. So, Tom, you got a question?
Yeah, could you back up to that last slide you were just showing? Just to clarify to the people that are on the screen and, and might not know a lot about what goes on down at Donkey Creek. The one showing the, the, the dam. Could you back up?
Uh, sure. But I, I will be getting into that. So I'm gonna be talking about the, the remote lighting behaviors and what's all that is about. Okay, uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say this very respectfully, but you started off by saying that, they've determined that this is an important culvert based upon their report. Uh, you know, the, the first three paragraphs of the report, uh, talks about how the data isn't necessarily, uh, true. It says it's an observation conditions in a dynamic environment. And I get that, but it said, no, no guarantee concerning the content, the accuracy, the completeness or the results. And here we are making decisions on this report. I, I'm sure that I'll be educated further as this meeting goes on. Uh, but it just concerns me that, uh, there are some identifiable errors in that report. And, uh, I just wanna caution us on making decisions on an error that, on a, on a document. This might be just one of many, but on this particular document, I don't feel comfortable making decisions, uh, concerning the errors that are on it.
Thank you. I think that's a very good point. Uh, again, one of the main reasons why we have asked, uh, folks from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and others to join in this meeting to help us further understand this. And one of the reasons why, as, as you probably know, we have in the budget, a budget item to look further into this potential project to see, uh, what concepts might be out there, what the planning, if we do decide to go forward, what planning impacts we might have and what cost it might be. Because we do an initial assessment, maybe council decides one way or another with all that information. So definitely not looking to make a decision today. Okay, so, um, one of the first questions that is likely asked in this situation, and again, we're not gonna answer this um, fully today, but is, is the city required to make culvert such as this fish passable? If, if we were to agree that there's, it's not fully passable to partial barrier, is it city required to make it passable? Well, in two thousand eighteen, the Supreme Court, uh, had a decision, uh, that required Washington State to remove all fish barriers. Um, both full barriers and partial barriers. At the time that that decision was made back in two thousand eighteen, um, the common opinion was that local governments such as Gig Harbor should be prepared to follow in the footsteps of Washington State. Since the city of Gig Harbor is a political subdivision of the state. And so as we proceeded, that, that's the stance staff took. And we were prepared to follow in those footsteps. Now, since then, we have heard more recently, and Matt will also be able to jump in and talk about this. Uh, that th- there's more clarification on that now, since we're to, al- almost four years after that decision. And we know now that it, it's focused now strictly, that court decision was focused on State Department of Transportation culverts, not city of Gig Harbor culverts or other local jurisdictions. So, but we can talk about that also in a minute. And so we have, we have looked at this, we have, um, had discussions with AWC, um, MRSC, uh, who support the city. And we've also talked to Department of Fish and Wildlife and heard from their input. So Matt, uh, if you don't mind just, uh, jumping in here and, and probably giving us some of your opinion of where the city stands, is it required to be removed? And, and, uh, where we can go at that, from the requirement standpoint.
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you, Jeff, and good afternoon, uh, everybody from Gig Harbor. It, this is a big group and it's good to see you all. Um, some of you I've met before, some of you I've worked with, uh, quite frequently, actually in some of my past lives as a regional habitat biologist. So it's good to see you all. I wish we could do this in person. Um, yeah, Jeff gave you a very brief intro of the, uh, state's culvert injunction responsibilities. Uh, given the Supreme Court decision. Um, it, there were, uh, four state agencies that own, uh, water crossing structures, culverts in this case. Um, those four agencies are Department of Fish and Wildlife, us, Department of Natural Resources, State Parks, and the Washington Department of Transportation. Uh, for the most part, uh, DFW, DNR and State Parks have met their injunction responsibilities. Um, I think DNR still has some, um, some hangers on out there. State Parks and DFW were in, uh, monitoring mode, meaning that we survey any, uh, new, um, property that, that ends up in our hands or property that hasn't previously been sur- uh, surveyed for these injunction culverts. And then if we find them, we have six years under the injunction to bring them up to fish passage standards. And we also, uh, keep an eye on the culverts that we've already upgraded to make sure that they still pass fish, uh, for perpetuity. The injunction lasts forever. Um, Wash Dot had a whole lot more culverts to deal with because they own the roads, uh, than any of the other agencies. And so they, they, they still have a lot of work in front of them. Um, the agreement with the, the tribal folks, uh, over the injunction is that they have till twenty thirty to complete, uh, ninety percent of, of, not of the crossings, but to get ninety percent of the potential habitat gains for fish back, um, opened up for, for fish passage. Um, and they are in full work mode to get that done. As it stands now, uh, the injunction only covers those four state agencies and only covers culvert crossings, uh, for those four state agencies. Jeff mentioned that there is some additional information at play. There are two parts that I, that I think concern the city of Gig Harbor and the fish passage crossings that you guys have here. Uh, the first one, and maybe the most important one, and the reason that Gwen and Darren have joined us today. Um, there is, uh, the, the Department of Fish and Wildlife has a longstanding hydraulic project authority, HPA authority. Uh, you may be familiar with the HPA permit that we issue for construction projects that may impact the better flow of state waters. Um, that authority, um, would state that anytime one of these fish passage crossing or one of these water crossing structures culverts, uh, fails or, and it reaches the end of its useful life. You know, these things don't last forever. Every road out there needs maintenance of some sort at some point in time. Um, it will then have to be brought up to fish passage standards as they stand today. So long way of saying that, that the fish passability of the current structure um, has a, has an end date to it, either sooner or later. Um, there's one other piece, uh, that we're working on right now as directed by the legislature, and that involves an RCW, uh, seventy-seven fifty-seven. And RCW seventy-seven fifty-seven, um, was something that I think was put into the RCW maybe back in the forties. And it basically says that ownership, knowing ownership, uh, knowingly owning a fish passage barrier under property is against the law. Um, and the way that, the way that seventy-seven fifty-seven, uh, rectified that situation was to say that the director of Fish and Wildlife come on your property, uh, fix it at the department's cost and then put a lien on your property, uh, to, to recoup those costs. We have never exercised that authority, nor would we. Uh, that's a little bit heavy-handed for government. I, I think we'd all be in agreement. Um, but the legislature has asked us to put rules around that RCW for how, for how we would eventually gain compliance and fish passability. So expect that effort, that rulemaking effort and those new rules to be available. Um, they're already up for public review. If you wanna take a look, you can find them. Uh, I think we have a website on, on DFW's webpage. And you probably find them scattered elsewhere if you look at the, uh, the legislature's webpages. Those rules should be in effect probably next year, although it's always tough to tell, um, if they're especially, uh, contentious or require additional debate. So we'll have to see how that timeline goes. Um, so that's kind of the, the world of fish passage and sort of when we see these barriers in place, kinda how we look at them. And the, maybe the final point before I shut up and let somebody else talk that I'll make is that, that thirty-three percent passability rating. Um, it means that there are some times and some flows that fish can get past that barrier, but that, uh, you know, the other sixty-six percent of the time, it is a full barrier to, to, to fish in general, so that they can't get past that. Um, I wanted to clarify that point. But anyway, if you guys have any other questions and Jeff, I'll hand it back to you. I know there's probably some other points to discuss. Um, and I'm happy to talk about whatever you guys want fish passage. It's what I do all day, every day.
All right. Yes, I'll take questions from Matt right now, Councilmember Sorsen.
Yes, thank you. Um, I was actually, I'm glad you brought up the passage part, cause I was, I was definitely curious there. As you know, uh, we have have a number of new council members here and I'm not sure if they've studied up as, as much, um, or to the, I mean, the level that I have, which is, I don't know a lot about these. Um, I've heard things, obviously, uh, in the community. I, I live just down the street from Donkey Creek and there many times. Um, I'm curious, what is considerable, considered, uh, can, uh, the right percentage of passage then? Is it a hundred percent? I mean, a hundred percent sounds like the goal, right? But, um, what's reasonable? And have we done a study? This might just, this might go back to you, but on all of our culverts, have we identified Donkey Creek as being the most, um, uh, the top priority? Is that fair?
That's a, that's a very good question. Um, we have not done an, in a separate study of all city culverts. We have only used the existing DFW data. Um, and, but that's one thing that we've been talking about i- internally on the staff level since the middle of last year is we should figure out a way in twenty twenty-two possibly, if not shortly thereafter, to put a list of priority culverts together. Of course, most uh, we have two already that are identified in our stormwater, uh, capital project budget. It is this culvert here at North Creek slash Donkey Creek. It's the other, it's the other creek is Crescent Creek. Um, the culvert right under Bernhardson. But also we are, we are doing exactly what Matt just described. We're taking a culvert that has reached its end of useful life and we're making it a fit. It is a current fish, partial fish barrier or full fish barrier. I'm not sure about this one. That's, uh, the culvert under Ninety-Sixth Street, ju- or sorry, under Burnham Drive, just south of Ninety-Sixth Street. That is going to be, uh, fish passable, uh, when we're through with it. It's gonna be a bridge essentially right there. And so we will check another box, but we didn't do that because it was a priority to improve and, and be able to open up, open habitat. It's because the culvert failed and now we're making it fish passable. But that's something that we do need to do. We need to back up, uh, at some point soon and then list all of our culverts and put them into a priority. And then that will help us go after grant funding and just fund our capital projects in general for stormwater.
And I can expand on it just a little bit more too. You asked about the passability question. That's a great question. Um, the, the, you know, when, when you come in for a permit for a water crossing structure, um, which you require to do, you also have to go through the federal permitting process for these projects too. Um, both of us, the state and the feds will require a hundred percent passability, uh, when, when that, when that comes in for, for a construction permit. So that will be the sort of baseline standard. Um, and you, you know, you asked about prioritization and, and I- And you know, you asked about prioritization and, and I honestly, you know, W D F W, um, we don't have a priority scheme for Gig Harbor itself, right? We haven't, uh, narrowed prioritization down to the city level. Um, what, when we look at the, at the city and the, and the streams and waters available to us there, we see the reason, reason Donkey Creek crossing and the Crescent Creek crossing sort of stand out is because they're, they're close to the salt, right? They're the lowest barriers in those systems. And so they kind of pop out, you know, as, as identifiable barriers that are probably a priority come out because they're the first ones the fish are going to encounter.
All right. Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Uh, Councilmember Barbara.
So I, I think that Matt may have just answered my question, but I'm just, because I'm drinking from the fire hose right now. So what I heard you say, Jeff, is that we don't, we haven't really created a priority list. But Donkey Creek is first because it's failing the most and because it's closest to the water. So it has the most potential.
No, the, the covert, I, I was, I'm sorry if I confuse you. I was telling you, there, there's a separate covert upstream of Donkey Creek that is close to ninety sixth street. But that was the one that's failing and we're actually going to rebuild that one, hopefully be out to bid in construction this summer or this fall. Um, the, the North Creek, Donkey Creek Culvert underneath Harborview Drive, that's the topic of tonight's, this afternoon's discussion. Um, isn't failing. It is, uh, but it's like Matt said, it's one of the closest ones to the saltwater. And, um, we are, i- 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 compared to Crescent Creek, the, the data that we have at this point shows that this, the money that would be spent on doing a cover replacement would be have to provide you with the most bang for your buck, biggest benefit by doing the North Creek Culvert under Harborview.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Henderson.
Yeah, I, I think that kind of answered my question as well. I mean, it's evident to almost everybody that that portion of North Creek that enters into the Gig Harbor has a lot of fish moving up it. So I think we may say that the cover is still in use from a, from an engineering point of view, but we would get more from it. More benefit for the salmon population if we were to start with that replacement one. Crescent Creek is a good one, but you and I have discussed some of the huge challenges on that one.
Yes, yes. Uh, Tom Lovravich.
Hey, good afternoon. I have all different opinion on this covert than, than the gang that's on here. That, that culvert's far from failing. It's a five by five square concrete culvert that I can walk through. I'm six foot four and quite large. I've been down working at the Donkey Creek Fish Hatchery, which is on the, the creek since it, it was permitted for water rights to run that hatchery in nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy one to be exact, in November. And the partial blockage that, I believe his name is Matt is referring to it, that was in that photograph that Jeff showed us a little while ago. Is when our dam is up and the system is running, we have a permit to actually block that water source from November first to April thirtieth for fish propagation. We plant one million chum eggs on that system. And a lot of people don't even realize it's there. It's so hidden down in that hole. But it's been there since nineteen seventy one in some shape or form, starting the guys that came before me started out with a hundred thousand eggs and went to three hundred thousand, six hundred. Now we're up to a million. We're the largest voluntary, free. We're, we're separate from the state. Uh, we have a million eggs on the brood document every year to plant down there. And the reason why there's fish in that creek is because of the hatchery itself. So when I see things about this pristine hat, spawning grounds that are upstream, if anyone is familiar with that creek, it is very poor for fish propagation. It is so short and steep that runs really cannot survive on their own. They're not with the amount of housing we've allowed upstream and even the, even the water that comes from the new, uh, North Harbor Hill stuff all comes down toward Donkey Creek and the question is, is that, does that covert really need to be changed? Fish have been going through that covert for decades and continue to. I'm happy to answer any questions about the hatchery for those that don't even know it's there.
Uh, thank you, Tom. I think you've brought a very good point that there's a wide variety of opinions on this. Um, we're, we're, we're here to talk about those. I, I appreciate what, what you're saying and I appreciate what Matt and others are, will be saying. Um, and I guess it's the council's place at some point in the future, though not necessarily at the study session. But it's the council's, uh, their role in the future to make a decision on whether, again, it's going to be worth it to take the money that would be necessary to make it fish passable and do the replacement. I, and I just want to reiterate one point though, the covert under Harborview Drive that North Creek, Donkey Creek flows to is not failing. That's not the reason we're here today. I, this, we're, if, if I confused you, I apologize. That covert underneath Harborview Drive, we, we staff don't have anything in to indicate that the culvert's failing. That's not why we're here today. Uh, Councilor Rodenberg.
Yes, I have a question for, uh, Mr. Lovravich. Uh, Tom Lovravich, you mentioned that you plant chum eggs there. Uh, the Department of Fish Wildlife actually calls out the five different species of salmon. Uh, and you only plant chum. Are those other species in that creek? Have you been there for fifty years? Have you, over fifty years? Have you seen any of those other species?
There, I've, I've never seen a coho or, or a steelhead in that, in that stream ever. There may be some resident little rainbow trout upstream, possibly some cutthroat, may migrate up and down. But none of those other species. There was a time when we used to take our own eggs. We would block them, put the dam up and, and collect the returning adults. We'd fill that, there's a pond down there, but if people were getting familiar with, there's an area that we fill and makes a pond. We would put the adults in there. Then when we'd have about three hundred adults accumulated, we drain it, take the eggs out of them, take them to Minner Creek where they would eye them out. They, they keep the incubated eggs till about January first, first, middle of January. Then we bring the eggs back to Donkey Creek and plant them in our R S I's, which stands for Remote Site Incubators. Earlier on, before the remote site incubators were installed, we had big wooden boxes that were full of gravel and had plumbing in them to pretty much assimilate a creek. And, and the water goes in the bottom of the box through the gravel where the eggs lay. So anyway, we've never seen any of those other species. In fact, when Donkey Creek got started in the early seventies, there were no chums even in Donkey Creek. And there's so much history here that people, we don't have enough time for it to tell you today. But back in the days when we started this, or my friends who most are deceased now started this, the state of Washington had the attitude, let's plant fish everywhere. So any people, people like us that took on the responsibility said that we want to start this volunteer project. We put in the paperwork and they gave us chum eggs to start at Donkey Creek. And that happened all over the sound. Cohos and chums, wherever people had a permit that they would give, they would plant eggs wherever they felt like it. Well, that's now been back scaled and they don't, no longer let eggs travel around as much as they used to. But that's the reason why there are chums there to this day.
Thanks, Jeff. Just want to remind council and everyone that is here that, um, this discussion was requested by the council. And the whole intent here is to have a robust talking through of all the issues that we need to consider, uh, if this project is going to be moving forward or not. So I appreciate the perspectives that everyone is bringing. Uh, we are not looking for any kind of final decision on anything today. This is an educational, uh, type discussion. So this is your time, council, to ask questions with our guests. This is your time to ask questions, to provide information. So the whole council is made aware of all the various issues, uh, nuanced and not nuanced when it comes to this project. And I do have one question for Tom. Uh, and that is, how many fish do you have returning every year? I'm, and I'm really just curious about that because, uh, if you're putting a million, if you're planting a million eggs every year, uh, I'm really curious as to the return rate, if you can even give that.
Okay, R S I's are real, they're not the most effective way to raise salmon. Obviously you put the, the fed, fed from when fry come out of their egg state and the, the hatcheries will put them in a pond and feed them for a couple of months. Obviously, the larger they get, the better success rate you have. R S I's, we release the fishes unfed fry. So we put an eyed out egg in these boxes and about tax time, they come pouring out. And, uh, in April, we shut it down. Those that we get, you, you probably get a one to two percent maximum return out of, out of uh, um, R S I's. So as, as a million, you're talking twenty thousand fish. So, uh, we, we, we have, you know, a lot of it gets caught in the commercial fisheries and that they're out in the biomass for lots of stuff to feed on. But last year, I think we had maybe only two hundred fifty fish come back. We've had times where we've had thousands come back and and we've had complete failures of water loss since O P G put that stuff up at the Harbor Hill. They had a ninety thousand gallon accidental pond loss and we had, we had, it was like three years ago. We had fish just not ready to leave the barrels and I come down to check it in the morning and everything's completely plugged full of gravel and sticks. And so, you know, there was, there's, it's not a perfect science. It's that you just hope you keep the water running and the fish get out. But there's a lot of people, a lot of things people don't understand what's going on down there. And I'm happy to give anybody a tour and educate them on what's been going on down there and how it works. One thing I will say, since you're looking for input on this, if that culprit was to be taken out, our water source for continuing to raise fish in that spot would be gone unless the city provided us with a water source. Like I say, we do have water rights. I got paperwork in front of me here from the Department of Ecology specifying the amount of water we can take and when. Whether, you know, these are ongoing, I'm pretty sure they are, but, or if the culprit was taken out, we could maybe relocate upstream possibly, but then again, somewhere water would have to be dammed off to run the hatchery. That's a decision that also will have to make because, you know, you know, if you take out a covert, it would replace the, the hatchery.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, just kind of a general question to Matt Curtis and maybe Rachel and some of the others, Angela as well. Um, on the question of what species we might see coming up that creek. Uh, we've heard that maybe only chum use it, but, um, I know from the D F W paperwork, it was indicating a number of species now. Whether we individually see them, you have to be there twenty four seven to see that. And I don't know if any of us are sitting down there for that long, but can I get a kind of a, um, a statement or just your feeling for whether that stream can support other species than what it has?
Yeah, let me, uh, I'll, I'll give a, just a real, real brief picture and then I, I'd love to hear from some of the, are my tribal counterparts. And, uh, if, if Darren or Glenn have anything to add to that, that'd be great too. Um, the, uh, the information that you have there, uh, describing species use is based on, uh, both historical uh, and potential species access and species use. Um, so it's not necessarily always documented. Um, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, and I don't, I don't have that data right in front of me. I, I fully believe Tom, when he says that he's only ever seen chum in there, that, that doesn't sound unreasonable to me. Um, and given the amount of anthropogenic changes that these streams have gone through in historical means, their species changes, uh, could have happened numerous times uh, in, over the, over the history of the, of the covert being in place or even, even earlier than that. And it's really difficult for us to predict what species might use it in the future, except by looking at neighboring streams and, and neighboring access to see that. I would also, one other point I would make is that, um, we also don't, uh, don't delineate between species that would use it for spawning. Uh, spawning and species that would use it for rare purposes. So you might get other species that wander in looking for food sources, whatever, as they're growing and, and maturing. Uh, rather than coming in for spawning access and things like that. And with that, I'd, like I said, I'd love to hear from any of my, uh, other partners on the call.
I'll intersect here, uh, Angela with Pilate Tribe. Do you mind responding directly? Thank you.
Hi, thanks. Yes, I was actually going to speak to the historical support of the stream for the species and those ones that not listed on his form are very much correct. And even more recently, um, I wish the Wild Fish Conservancy was here. They've done some water typing, which has documented coho and trout presence of juveniles. And I would say that the history of this stream is definitely goes back farther than the nineteen seventies. And so we have to consider that things like can, water quality or degraded habitat is not a reason for us not to change fish passage and make it better. Um, I actually think that it's more a reason to improve conditions for salmon, which have historically been in the stream, which are currently in this stream and where we can support these native, uh, origin species, so.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Woo. Hope you're muted, Councilmember.
Do we have any idea how many salmon or other fish might come up this stream if it were opened up? Uh, do we have any idea?
That is my favorite question that people always ask us and it is not, I, I, I would tell you it's not possible to answer in like a quantitative, like to give you like, you're going to get a run of five hundred fish returned. Yeah, that's, there's no way for us to know that. I would, I would tell you that my experiences thus far working in with fish passage is that barring all, all other barriers, uh, you will see, you will see more fish and they move in pretty quick. Um, although the numbers probably won't be, you're not going to see like, you know, a herd of salmon suddenly just marching into new territory when that happens. But you will see them trickle in over time. Um, what that ends up looking like is based on a hundred other factors um, that there's very difficult for us to, to do prediction. We're not usually in the prediction business.
So the whole point of doing this is because it is the first barrier there and we want to get fish further up this creek so that they can propagate and, and, or they can come up here and feed. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
And it is against the law, I, I think, to have a, a, a barrier that is to have a barrier. Is that also correct?
Yes, it is technically against the R C W, uh, to knowingly own a fish passage barrier on, on your property. And that works for private individuals, citizens, counties, local jurisdictions. I'll all remind you too that we haven't used that heavy handed approach to enforce that. We, it's more carrot than stick and that's, that's always how we approach these things.
Well, thanks for the carrot.
Yeah, no, no problem. I like carrots better anyway.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's, that's a good setup to why we're here and what we're talking about. Um, Nick, Councilmember Woo, did you still have a question? Okay, just didn't want to, I looked up and it was, okay, um, so now I'm going to move on to the project scope. So, um, I want to show you kind of generally that if we were to proceed with a project, what, what we're talking about, what that involves. So, but in order to give some of you who might not have seen our other covert replacement project, uh, covert removal project that we did in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, immediately downstream of this site. Um, I just wanted to give a couple of pictures and show you pre, post, what, what we've done there. So I'm going to quickly adjust my screen here. Okay, so, um, hopefully you can see on my screen now, this is, this is looking on North Harborview near the intersection of what is now hard, North Harborview and Austin Street looking. Would that be west, southwest? Uh, the concrete culverted in, in front of you is where Donkey Creek was placed within. There are some pilings that you see loosely in this picture. This used to be the old bridge foundation that used to cross Donkey Creek. And so you can see per this, what's known on this picture, uh, nineteen fifty, this is what, when this, the city converted this uh, once daylighted creek into a covert. And then the city looked at that in, in the early two thousands and said, well, now we need to reverse that. Uh, this is the first uh, covert that was originally in place, um, that we, that we looked at removing. And so this is an overview of what it looked like in, uh, two thousand eight, I believe, is when this aerial photo was taken. So Harbor History Museum was just constructed. Um, and you can see a couple of the buildings are still there and the covert came, was discharged. I think it's right here underneath where all these trees are, somewhere right around there. And this is what the covert, inside the covert looked like. Uh, about third full of sand and gravel that naturally is recruited upstream and deposited in the covert washed through. And so that caused a lot of operational issues. Habitat and, uh, fish aside, it caused operational issues. And so we looked at that, we saw the benefits and we said, okay, we need to do something about that. This is what the outlet of the culvert looked like right before construction started in February of twenty thirteen. So that's where Donkey Creek used to discharge into Gig Harbor. And this is what it looks like today. This is a two thousand fourteen or actually, no, I think it's two thousand twenty picture of the same site. So you can see the bridge is in place, the, the creek is daylighted. And then we did some plantings on the side. If you stand underneath the bridge now and look, this is looking up to, up to the north, northeast toward Austin Street, these trees have been filled in. But this is just again, November, right after the site was completed. Now, just something to keep in your, in your, your picture in your head, look at the surface of the roadway here on the bridge, that's North Harborview Drive. And then you can see where the, the creek itself, the bottom of the creek is, that elevation is about twen- not even more than twenty feet. You also see a bunch of utilities hanging from the bridge. Those are city utilities. And then looking out towards the open bay. Same area. Okay. So taking what we learned there and trying to consider what else we need to do to if the city wants to keep moving forward with doing things like this, improving operations and removing partial fish barriers. We wanted to we, we've continued to look upstream. And this culvert again is the next one upstream. Let's jump back into the pictures here, sorry. So now I'm going to look and, and share with you what it looks like today at the site itself. So you can see this is the culvert that we're talking about underneath Harborview Drive. That's the culvert here. Here's a flu system. This is the, where the water for the remote site incubators is gathered in the culvert that you saw the original picture on, it's in the report. The weir system is, is here at the outlet of the culvert. There's no weirs in the, in the culvert at this point. But you can, one thing I want to point out is look at the elevation change between the invert of the culvert and the crown of the roadway. There's a stop sign up here and there's our vehicle up here. You're, you're talking from the loose numbers I have, we're talking about thirty plus feet of difference between these two. So already this project we're talking about is going to be more challenging because of the depth of the culvert underneath the roadway, the amount of fill over the culvert. This is the same culvert, only this is the upstream side of the culvert. It's wide open, big box culvert, as Tom mentioned, it's pretty big, you can walk through it. For reference point, there's a telephone pole here with a little junction box on it. That's alongside the roadway. So now I'm going to talk about the actual project of what we're, what we're in concept, talking about what, what's in the budget to look at further. We have the barrier removal, which is the culvert for North Creek under Harborview Drive. And then we have another part of the project is to actually take this unnamed creek that is on the south side of the city's wastewater treatment plant. Right now that creek goes into a series of culverts. The, the, this line work is from, I think it's from D F W, it's from the state. I don't remember if it is D F W line work. It shows it in the dotted line, meaning it's, it's piped and discharging underneath the history museum. That's one of the outlets. That's the overflow to this. The main trunk line actually goes into a manhole culverts, culverted down along Harborview Drive to what is Lit Station Three essentially, and turns and goes, discharges right here. This is a complete fish blockage. The, the, the question is, we, we've looked at this project and, and looking at the same operational issues, this culvert and those catch basins fill up routinely with sediment for that's recruited from these ravine and this stream system. So we have an issue, we're trying to resolve it. And we, we have some temporary fixes in place today because we're also discharging when this one culvert that runs along Harborview Drive gets plugged, we would then overflow under the history museum and go through their system. And so that's a relief valve, but it's not the best way to manage the system. So we have temporarily been able to manage this. We, we routinely go out and clean these. But then we think the permanent fix is, and after talking to Fish and Wildlife, this unnamed tributary at one point used to connect into North Creek somewhere along here. We don't know how it was, it was again, before European settlement occurred in here. And we don't have record exactly, at least I don't think we have record exactly where this tributary connected with North Creek, but it did somewhere before it hit Gig Harbor. So we're trying to find a way to bring it through the treatment plant, have it be daylighted with a natural stream bread, connect in the North Creek before it discharges and goes underneath Harborview Drive. So I'm going to pause it. And I see Councilman Henderson has his hand up. So I'm going to answer some questions at this point. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Jeff. Does that unnamed creek flow most of the year or all the year?
It flows all year round.
Okay, so if, if this additional work to route that into North Creek, that would end up saving some maintenance, long term maintenance, because the current system requires a great deal of maintenance to be cleared out often, right?
Yes, yes, it does. I, I can tell you when we have with our temporary fix, we have taken out the significant long term maintenance that we have to deal with, which is cleaning out the box culvert underneath the Harbor History Museum. The Harbor History Museum is part of their stormwater infrastructure. When they built the museum, built this massive box culvert underneath the museum. And the parking lot of the history museum doesn't discharge into their own stormwater system, massive boulders, you know, two, three, four inch boulders. We know where that comes from. It comes from the overflow from the unnamed creek that is conveyed through the city's infrastructure. So the city goes in and maintains that box culvert for the history museum because of this. We also have to clear out our catch basins, our manholes and our culvert that run along Harborview Drive. So I mean, it, it's a cost. The question is, do we do, do we continue to just pay that ongoing maintenance cost, which we could do?
Do you know if we have ever seen any fish either attempting to go up the culverts in that area?
I see Rachel nodding her head. I, that would be a better person to answer than me.
Thanks.
Yeah, we see it all the time. We do salmon tours and we start there in Austin Estuary Park and we'll kind of walk through. And a lot of times we can pause and look and point to fish who are kind of in the wrong end. That is just a total dead end for them. Hopefully they'll kind of get turned around. They're still in the saltwater. So they haven't like set their course yet when they attempt to go there. So hopefully they can still get around. But yeah, they try for sure.
Cool.
Okay, I'm going to continue unless there's any more questions at this point. Yes, Councilor Storset.
Yeah, and I know this is just a discussion, obviously learning a lot right now. I guess a few other things that I, you know, that come to mind is I'm curious if like, what is considered a barrier, you know, like, right? Because I mean, it could be a low tide, it could be a drought. You know, there could be some natural causes. Those are more natural causes, I guess. But is there like a certain height or elevation gain, you know, based on like how long that causes it more of an issue? I'm also curious, I know it's hard to track, but some type of statistics on, you know, where we're currently at with returns, which I would imagine we have sometime, I've seen counts on that before. But where would we expect to go? Would we actually see a, a large improvement? You know, on this, those are the type of things, not large. I know we talked about this earlier, like, we're not going to see king salmon, you know, more, more, more fish than water. But, but I'm just curious because that is, that is a, you know, it helps with the reasoning and I'm trying to understand this project a bit more.
Sure, maybe Matt or Angela can chime in on that.
And I can start with your, the first part of your question about what's considered a barrier, Councilmember Storset. So we have a booklet of protocols that we use for determining when we do, or we have inventory assessment crews that go out to these sites. And they're the ones who write those reports that Jeff was showing for the group today to assess barriers. And so they have a, a set of protocol standards for barrier determination. And the things, you know, that are immediately identified in our, in our WAC rules as potential things that can impede fish passage, behavioral impediments, excessive water slope drop or velocity issues, shallow flow, lack of surface flow, uncharacteristic course, bed material, and then some other related conditions. And in this case, it's the water surface drop. That was the part that was noted on the report. And the water surface drop barrier criteria is based on a six inch trout, the jumping ability of the six inch trout. And so in that case, it's, it's, I think it's pointy, it's pointy feet is the maximum drop. That's a lot of pointy meters. I forget if we used imperial or scientific measurements for that one. But that's, that's the criteria that the crews use to determine whether or not there's a barrier to fish and is based on the leaping ability of a six inch trout. And so that's, that's how this one was determined to be, to be a barrier.
Yeah, one other question on that. I'm not trying to like, we're not trying to solve anything, obviously, just trying to learn more. I mean, is there any reason why there couldn't just be like a tier basically off of what exists already and basically creating a, a smaller barrier, like a step down? And what was that like? That might be a huge, you know, just forget the cost savings, but it might be something that's easier to do. And we can also keep the hatchery operating as it is.
Yeah, you're talking about a, a fishway type system or, or, or something.
Yeah, calling a fish ladder, I guess you could call it.
Sure. And, and, and we have used those in the past. A lot of people ask about fishways. They are, they are somewhat successful by getting, getting fish passed, although they wouldn't be allowed in. So, you know, they could be potentially used as a temporary measure, but they wouldn't be allowed as a, as a replacement to the structure itself. So at the time when you need to actually replace the culvert end of its useful life, or when it has failure, whatever, it would still need to become a fully passable water crossing structure without, without a fishway or any other sort of helper in, in place.
All right, thank you. Any other, Angela, did you have a comment on that one, too? Okay, I thought so. I didn't see your hand up, but the look on your face, I thought you had something. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to speak to your returns question a little bit more and I'm sorry, I can't give you a concrete answer, but I will say that in, in our operations, for example, it takes a lot of time and effort in order to do monitoring for either juvenile salmon outmigration as well as adult salmon returns. And we have to do it year after year after year, because as you know, salmon life cycles can extend anytime from two to five to seven years, depending on the species. So it's quite a bit of effort to try to estimate that for you and just give you a number off the fly. But I will say that anecdotally for restoration sites on, say, South Prairie Creek, for example, the one that was completed last spring or summer, we saw salmon returns immediately. Last fall, there was pink and Chinook presence documented. On Wapatoa Creek, where a restoration project was just completed in November of twenty twenty one, there were adult Coho returns immediately. So if you build it, salmon will come. They, they are very sensitive species, but they're also very resilient. They will, if you give them the way, they'll find it.
Thank you, Angela. Councilwoman Runberg.
This is just a question either for either Laura Bitch or, or maybe even Angela can chime in here. Tom Laura Bitch, I'm curious, you, you plant all those chum and they come back. And I think that's probably the primary food source for orcas and sound. But does anybody ever fish that? I mean, surely you do this out of the goodness of your heart is, I have seen tribal fishermen down there. As the fish come back, they'll throw up a net in front of that creek. Does, does the Gig Harbor Commercial Fishing Fleet ever fish in our harbor or near the mouth of that creek?
Oh, we never fish inside the Harbor Bay. The tribes do come with their beach sains when there's, when it's clearly visible, we have large returns, they will come and make sets right outside the outfall. And then this year's return is coming off the failure of that O P G pond failure. So had very minimal amount of fish get out. And for people that are on the call, too, I haven't, we haven't had eggs in our barrels down there for three years prior because of a virus that was detected at the Minter Creek Fish Hatchery. There's a virus that could they detect, being that our fish are eyed out at Minter Creek Fish Hatchery. They cannot allow fish to leave the, that, that watershed. So there used to be, this is, this has happened before with this I H N viruses detected, but it used to be a one year policy. So there were several times in our last, you know, fifty years down there that we couldn't get eggs because of the virus. But our eggs are still taken and released from Minter Creek. It's not like fish or eggs are ever wasted. So that for the last three years, they changed the policy now that when the virus is detected, you can't plant for three years. So for three years, we had to lay dormant and not release any fish from Donkey. So it's, 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 it's a loss for the community and people to see fish in the stream. Yet our million were released at Minter Creek facility. So they're still in the biomass. But to answer your question, there are commercial fisheries that take place in the fall for chums north of Gig Harbor, all the way up to Kingston, say, and Hook Canal, the chum fisheries. But no, the tribes will come routinely when they know there's volume there. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to continue. So I'm going to bring up on the screen next, a little more detailed sketch. And this is something that we look, this is how we first started looking at this. And I, I don't see a date on this drawing, but I can tell you, Trent, maybe you can verify, but I think it's a two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen drawing. So this is, we've been looking at this for quite a while. This is a rough sketch of how this would work. And this shows the thirty six inch culvert that goes, that this unnamed tributary goes down along and then discharges out into the Austin Creek Estuary. This is a housing development, it's a stormwater pond for the housing development that is now Rosedale Village. Phase one, Rosedale Village, phase two is over here and discharges down here. But this is the ravine between the treatment plant and Rosedale Village. And so you can see, we have currently a stormwater pond, a treatment plant here and here. Detention or water quality and detention. And so we would have to take that out. We would have to daylight unearth that stormwater facility, put a bridge in culvert, box culvert probably, and then relocate our stormwater detention treatment system at the treatment plant, put it up the hill a little bit. And then there's the culvert right there. So that's the concept of what we're talking about and, and the scope. And it's not shown here, but it's been mentioned a few times. The remote site incubators, those are over here. I've got a picture of that in just a moment. I'll show what that looks like. In fact, maybe here, I think it's next. Yeah. So these are the remote site incubators that we've been talking about. This is if you're standing on the platform that I think the Rotary built a few years ago in Donkey Creek. You're looking across the creek and this is Austin Street here. So this is where, and this is in the winter times, this, this picture was just taken, I think, took it last week. And so you can see these remote sighting computers during the summertime, you'll never see them because of the vegetation. But this is, they receive their water from the flu that we saw right at the outlet of the culvert. So that's where they get the water. It's transported down here and runs through the R S I's and then the, the water is discharged here. And so, Tom, I don't know if you want to speak anymore to this right now and, and give any more information, or if you, I should just proceed.
Now, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But yes, you pretty much said it, all the water comes down that trough. We have to dam up the culvert as we were permitted to under our water rights. It fills a pond that is just to the left of those R S I's you're looking at. And that pond is a settling pond for more of the silt to fall out of the water before it goes through some screens and then onto these R S I's. But they pretty much covered it.
Okay. All right, I'm going to stop, share my screen for a minute. So we want to talk about, well, what next, I'm going on the impacts now. If we look and start trying to develop a concept of what it might take and what the impacts might be for the site if we were to remove this culvert and replace it with a fish passable culvert, what impacts would that have? Well, it's definitely going to impact the R S I's. I know there's water rights, we're not going to be involved in the water rights, though those are there, we, we don't get involved in that. But we're going to impact the R S I's. So that the city would have to put in its design, how we're going to keep water flowing to those R S I's. We, we could keep the R S I's where they are and figure out a way to gather the water and convey it so that we continue to make sure that we abide by those water rights that, that, that are there. Or we could look at relocating those R S I's to somewhere else in the creek that might be better for everybody. I don't, if Tom or Greg, if you guys want to talk about if there's a better location, happy to hear it. We don't have to talk about that now, but that's a possibility about relocating those R S I's. But we recognize that that's going to be something that if we were to do anything here, we have to keep those R S I's operational. But we recognize that that's going to be something that if we were to do anything here, we have to keep those RSIs operational. So we also recognize that the impacts are going to be, what we've been talking about a lot here is we're going to remove a partial fish barrier. We're going to open. And and if you can picture, you have that image of, in fact, I can bring it back up if you want, but you can, we're going to open a lot of area for habitat and spawning grounds. And so, and we're doing, like I said, we're doing our, this year, we're doing our culvert project upstream North Creek. To make it fat fish passable, so it'll be building upon each other as we as we go. And then there's one more impact we're going to have. And we can't, and I'm going to share on the screen, an intersection improvement project that we have been working on also since, well, before two thousand seventeen at the intersection of Harborview and Austin. So as you picture today, that's a three way stop. That intersection has always been intended to be a roundabout. But we can't, well, I'd say we can't, I'm not going to recommend that we proceed with doing that roundabout there until we deal with the culvert down below. Because the roundabout that's shown here, this is, this is a conceptual design, we can do this. We need more right of way, but we've already talked to the Heritage Point folks about this when they submitted their design to acquire more right of way. But the one thing we need to do is before we do this roundabout and intersection project, we need to replace that culvert because we don't want to put in the roundabout and then come in five, ten, fifteen years later, rip it up and then rebuild the entire, we'd have to tear out the entire roundabout to build a bridge. And so it doesn't make any sense. So as long as we keep that culvert in place and don't do anything with the culvert, we can't improve that intersection. And I can tell you the number one intersection that I hear from residents and staff alike of intersections where people disobey intentionally disobey the stop signs is this intersection. People blow through the stop sign routinely. And we've tried to emphasize it by putting stop ahead signs, flags, increasing size of signs. People continue to disobey it. And one of the benefits of a roundabout, you can't disobey using the roundabout. And 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 there's less, there's the safety improvements, so I won't go into that here. But this is one of the impacts is was once the culvert is replaced, then we can proceed with this intersection project. And again, you see some of the information that this is again from April of two thousand seventeen, cost from April of two thousand seventeen and not the cost of the culvert. This is assuming the culvert was going to stay in place. So, but that's when we said, well, we can't make that assumption. So I'm going to pause here. I can leave this up on the screen. I see there are a few hands. Councilmember Henderson, I believe you were first.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeff. On the roundabout project in the culvert, would are we at a point where those two, assuming that we go ahead with the culvert replacement, which I hope we we do? Would it be a significant cost savings to bundle both projects? Are they, or there's timelines for them so far apart that it wouldn't be doable? That is, we do the whole thing at once. I I could see some pretty darn good issues, why we should do them as a joint project, cost, moab and demo. Secondly, if we're going to impact traffic, which any kind of project, whether it's the culvert project or the roundabout, there is going to be a traffic traffic impact there. Instead of doing it twice, we'd only have a larger impact once. So can you speak to, is there any possibility of combining these two into one project?
Yes, there absolutely is a possibility of combining them into one project. Right now, we've kept them separately if for no other reason for funding purposes.
Right.
But as we proceed down, if if the if the council, majority councils does hear the information that we're going to provide later this year in a report about the culvert itself. If there is an interest in deciding to proceed with the project all at once, we can talk about that and what that might look like. But whatever happens, the the culvert, whatever is replaced for the culvert, assuming it's a bridge similar to North Harborview. We're going to make sure that bridge is ready to build at the elevations with everything else for the roundabout project.
Yeah, hopefully when we get to that point, we would know. Questions like if we do this, does it shove the project out twenty years from now because of we have to acquire property rights or something like that, or design isn't feasible for a long time?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. Councilor Rodenber.
Yeah, this kind of speaks to both what you just mentioned and what Roger said. I would hate to see that these projects would co-mingle funds, so to speak. I'd hate to think that that Donkey Creek culvert was prioritized so we could get funding from any sort of grants that we'd also spend on the round, part of partially on the roundabout only in the terms of, yeah, that might be good business. But I'd hate to see if there's something else that should take a higher priority. I'd hate to see a culvert take priority just because we could co-mingle those funds.
Okay, yeah, that's a very good point. And I think that we'll be able to address that later this year when we provide more information and do more of that conceptual study. Okay, let's stop sharing my screen now. I guess it's a good time to jump into funding. We've been talking about the project, I think we understand the scope and the and and the why we're talking about this. The, I'll jump in and say just that the the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen project underneath underneath North Harborview used a variety of funding sources. Most of, a large majority of the money came from grants, federal grants paid for a lot of it. Trent, I believe that was before your time here. I wasn't directly involved in the project, but it was a five, six million dollar project. And I think over half of it came from grants. We would be looking at the same thing and and the bridge was built at the same time and and was a transit. It was partially funded by transportation funds. I do know that. So our current budget for two thousand twenty two is only providing funding for the completion of a conceptual design. A permitting inventory, in other words, what permits would need to be acquired and how difficult, what types of reports are you going to need to be required? And a conceptual cost estimate. And inside that cost estimate, we could possibly break it apart to show actual culvert only costs and potential roundabout costs. And then have those separated.
I was going to ask that.
We have, oh, sorry, Councilor Rodenber.
Just, just speaking to the priority, once again, Matt, I think, mentioned that Donkey Creek was chosen because they had the data on that particularly and not data on the other culverts. Is that correct, Matt?
No, I was, not the, not the data, at least that's not what I was, what I was getting at. Okay, so the the reason that Crescent Creek and Donkey Creek showed up, I think, and somebody might have been there. We had a little tour with Congressman Kilmer. And the reason we picked those two is because he's from Gig Harbor. And so we wanted to, you know, show him some of the fish passage issues on his doorstep. But also because for the city, those are two culverts that are lowest in the system, so closest to the salt. So the first ones that the fish are going to encounter. And that that was the only reason behind that.
Okay, then then my comment is that on Crescent Creek, I mean, on on Donkey Creek, we're going to build a roundabout. We're going to build a bridge, we're going to build a culvert, we're going to divert water from that unnamed creek to from North Creek. All that money would be spent, this is not an enormously expensive project. Whereas on Crescent Creek, although Councilman Denson and I have a personal, we both live within a hundred yards of that culvert. That creek has been known to have still had, at least when I bought my house twenty five years ago. The guy I bought it from told me that that stream behind my house has cutthroat in it. I haven't seen anybody take any out of there yet, but that was one of the prime, prime reasons I bought the home. But it's got a lot more potential, I would think, for an immediate impact on increasing fish numbers. Whereas the other project, probably six times as expensive. Might not have as quick an impact as just doing the same thing, the simple day lighting of Crescent Creek.
And I'll speak just loosely on the Crescent Creek culvert underneath Bernhardson Street quickly. We do have a study that was completed and I believe it was submitted to DFW, at least for review on the Crescent Creek culvert. The report was created by South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group under a grant that they acquired. And it speaks to what the benefits are, what the blockages and how it's a partial blockage and what alternatives might be presented at that crossing. That crossing is very expensive for another reason. It doesn't have the fill above it like we do here. It doesn't have, and I'm going to, I'm going to take the roundabout project out of it, just look at comparing apples to apples. It doesn't, it 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 has other aspects of that project that make it very expensive. Namely, the utilities that go underneath there and the fact that the only detour route for that is to detour everybody up Crescent Valley Drive to one forty fourth and back down Peacock. And the the utilities that are in that would be highly impacted. Which there aren't those same types of utilities at this, there's still utilities where we're talking about here at North Creek, but they're not at all like what's at Vern Hardson and Crescent Creek.
Jeff, isn't there a major natural gas line that goes along Vern Hardson?
There is, it it goes over to Bashan Island, there's an eight inch high pressure gas line.
But but yet that is still on our CIP. We're talking about doing it at some point.
Yes, it is, yep. So, yeah, so so going back to funding. We have something in our budget already. We have also, the city has submitted to West Sound Partners for Ecosystem Recovery, also known as Whisper, letters of intent for this project at North Creek. We've also submitted two other letters of intent, one for Crescent Creek underneath Bernhardson and one for just general property acquisition in the North Creek basin. And so that, those are the three letters. And so we've already submitted, queued ourselves up with that. Bree Ellis is working with Whisper on the technical advisory group to put us through the next steps of grant funding for that. We've also submitted an application for design funds through the Brian Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board. We're looking for design only funds for the North Creek project underneath Harborview. And we'll hopefully know as we proceed into two thousand twenty two, if we're successful with that application for design only. Then as council heard from Representative Kilmer, and we've talked about a little bit already here. Representative Kilmer is trying to find funds for this type of work. We would definitely be keeping an ear out with, at the federal level, along with Dale Learn's support to find out if this project would could get any grant funding at the federal level. And then just direct federal requests. So we think that we have some good opportunities to do, to find grant funding. And just in general, the the conceptual cost estimate back in two thousand six, seventeen or eighteen for this project, I was, I think, five million dollars. Looking at it today and looking, and again, not accounting for the roundabout. But looking at it today, my rough estimate, and as you saw in the two thousand twenty two, six year CIP for stormwater, I think this this project came in at like ten million dollars with design and construction. So maybe it came in a little more than that, but I might be getting Crescent Creek and.
And Jeff, what were the Crescent Creek project?
It was like a million dollars less than this project, or maybe it was the same. It was, it was really close, maybe it's the same. And I I apologize, I didn't say this at the beginning, but I just want to make sure I'm clear about it now because I know some of us keep saying Donkey Creek, some of us say North Creek, the the title of this is North slash Donkey Creek Replacement Project Discussion. I am using North Creek instead of Donkey Creek intentionally because the agencies that will be permitting us for this project have it identified as North Creek. The Donkey Creek name, I I don't know the history of it, but the Donkey Creek name is is not the name that's on the agency's documents. So if you see North Creek on these documents, it's because when we talk to the agencies, they know it is North Creek, not Donkey Creek. And so that's why, but you, we can use them interchangeably, but for official purposes, when we submit applications and have discussions with the agencies, it's going to be North Creek. So I should have said that at the beginning. Councilmember Henderson.
So thanks, Jeff. So on funding issues. I don't think there's any prohibition for mixing funds as long as we, the cat, the city, keep track of what funds went to what portion of the project. I I recall doing that with the feds and we oftentimes would have lots of different funding sources. You just have to be very careful that you don't spend some money that's designed for the culvert replacement design on the roundabout design.
And we do that in-house all the time by having different bid schedules. So we'll have a bid schedule in this case, if we were to, if we were to combine the projects, you have a bid schedule for the color replacement and a bid schedule for the roundabout. And it's very easy to keep your money separate. But that said, a benefit of not merging the projects together is if we did receive federal funding for the culvert and we wanted to build the roundabout at the same time, the roundabout project would have to be federalized. As opposed to building the culvert separately and then building the roundabout separately. If we don't get federal grants or go after federal grants of the roundabout, it can just be a non-federalized project, which is, we've discussed before, often costs more to be federalized.
But you can coordinate the projects, do them at the same time. You just call them two different projects and account for.
You, yeah, you, but we bid them separately.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so, I'm sorry, Councilmember Henderson, do you have another question that I interrupted? So that's what I had, again, we're very early on in this discussion and just trying to set the stage here for what we might talk about, what information the council might want to hear when we come back. But I was just going to lay out the the last part of this, which is the next steps. At this point, staff is ready to to advertise for requests for qualifications for consultants to do that conceptual design permitting estimating analysis. If we, it's in our budget already. Unless we hear opposition, we can be prepared to submit that request for qualifications or start advertising for it in February or March. What that means is if we start advertising in February, March, we would probably come back to council. Well, actually, depending on the cost of it, the the budget was thirty five thousand dollars, I believe. Thanks, Trent, that's giving me a nod. Which is under the authority of the city administrator, so we wouldn't come back to council necessarily. But but we would be able to award a contract probably in the April timeframe if we advertised in late February or early March. And then the idea would be we'd complete the conceptual work and return to council later in two thousand twenty two. Ideally, before we get into budget discussions for two thousand twenty three. So that we can have that discussion and see if council has any interest in putting funding in two thousand twenty three for the next steps in in the work or not. So that's where we are. Councilmember Henderson.
Councilmember Henderson, you're on mute.
Thanks. So the RFQ we put out for designing estimating with that, would you propose that we make that estimating for the roundabout and the culvert replacement as well as design for the roundabout and culvert replacement? Or just focus on the culvert replacement for this RFQ you're talking about going out in February, March with an award in April?
Well, the the cost estimate, or sorry, the budgeted amount that we have didn't include anything to do with the roundabout. So if if we, I I'm not opposed to having the consultant also throw an estimate together for the roundabout, but we would probably exceed the budget, which isn't the end of the world, especially if there's interest in merging the two projects together. Because it would be a cost savings measure in the end. But if the intent is to stay within budget and not get that information, then I guess we would have to make that choice.
Yeah, I see that making some sense. Instead of paying twice, we pay maybe one and a half times for the design and cost estimating. So, thanks.
Councilmember Luke.
Yes, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Henderson that it makes sense for the cost efficiencies to get a conceptual design for both projects at the same time.
And Jeff, we can talk to the finance director about finding some transportation dollars to merge with that and do the cost estimating both at the same time. Since your surface wire fund should not pay for estimating costs on a roundabout.
Completely agree. Yep. I think we have lots of options for that. It, I think, Trent, is that the roundabout improvement, intersection improvements at Austin and Harborview, is that in our tip? That it, I think, Trent, is that the roundabout improvement, intersection improvements at Austin and Harborview? Is that in our tip?
It is, yes.
Okay, so right there, we've got impact fees, we've got all sorts of uh projects or revenue sources we can spend on. Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Rodenberg.
Is HBZ also a funding source?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep.
So. HBZ.
Yeah. So Jeff, to give direction, official direction to staff, would you like to see? Hands raised in support uh from council for merging those two. Um, into one design, one or merging those two projects into one RFQ. Or or can you just do that? What what do you think, Tony?
Unless unless I, you know, there's council members that object to that. Uh, I'll just take uh what we've heard so far as direction to at least do that part of it uh as one project.
Okay.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I just would have a a question. If we design engineer them both at the same time. Uh, is, does that put us on a a time schedule? Does that mean that? Uh, yeah, we got one of them done. We have to do it then quickly, whether or not we have the funding. Uh, we have to go find the funding for the other one, or is there, is what I'm saying is doing them both at the same time? Is it gonna force us, force us to uh put one project above other things in the city?
Um. Technically, no, it wouldn't force us to, but the reality is, is that once you merge the two projects together, there's probably a lot of. Documents, environmental documents and other documents that that would continue to link them together. And if you don't do them together, if you don't construct them together, bid them similar timeframes and everything else. You might have to go back and update per land use permits, environmental documents and and other things that were connected.
But Jeff, for the the effort you're talking about here, uh, we can ask the consulting engineer to give us. Cost estimates of the project being done separately and together.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And so that way we we know what the cost would be if we do them together and we know what would happen if we split them apart.
Yes, thank you. I I must have misunderstood you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Henderson.
And you, um, thanks. I uh would hope then that when the RFQ goes out. And tonight we agree that we combine them, that it's a relatively robust RFQ. Long-term engineer, I I see sometimes a lot of money trying to be saved during this process of design and cost estimating, only to pay twice again. When you actually get into in-depth, so um, I trust that your scope of work will be good. And then we'll get a, an excellent product out of it.
Well, I appreciate the uh, the the um. Support that you're giving us, but we don't have a whole lot of money. I mean, it was thirty-five thousand dollars. That's, that's a really thin amount of money to do anything that's of any, what's of any detail. I mean, it it's intended to just do a thirty thousand overview of what. Options are, what it could look like and what the rough cost.
And and Jeff, if we go out, when we go out for the RFQ, if we are very specific. And looking for, as uh Councilmember Henderson says, a good, robust study. And our consulting engineering firm comes back and says, this is really a fifty thousand dollar effort versus a thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar. For them, we can come back to council and say we need additional appropriation.
Yes, very true. Yes. Councilmember Barbara.
I turned mine off because it kind of got answered already.
Okay.
All right, well, I didn't have anything else. That's then what I had to present. Um, I really appreciate everybody being here. It, this is a.
Yes.
Great group to have, a lot of information, a lot of expertise, a lot of inputs. So, um, thank you very much for everybody participating.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all for being here. Really appreciate your time.
All right.
Are there any other questions from council or anything else that council? Has for our guests before we adjourn?
No, I I would certainly like to thank everybody that appeared today and thank you, Jeff and Trent and the rest for being so. So good at answering our questions. I know we pummel you sometimes with a whole lot of questions, but you guys are always there for us. So thank you much.
But Darren.
Hi, everybody. Since I haven't chimed in yet, I just thought I'd take a minute to introduce myself. I'm the. Area Habitat biologist for DFW that uh covers the Gig Harbor area. And so my responsibility is to review designs and and issue permits for projects in waters of the state. And so I just thought I'd let you guys know that. And if you have any questions, I'm always happy to talk to folks, uh, answer your questions. Uh, so feel free to give me a call if you'd like to.
And Darren. Darren is the reviewer at DFW that has reviewed the Antage projects, including Community Powder Talk, which is under construction. The Jerk of Ridge Pier Demo mitigation, which we didn't move down, but he will be the one reviewing the next, the Homeport Fishing. Folks, so.
As well.
Yeah. All right.
Anything else from our guests or from council? Okay, thank you all again for being, yeah, yes. Tony, did you have something?
No, no, I'm good.
Oh, okay. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you all so much. Have a great evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.